Thank you for joining us today on our August 4th School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order, please, we thank you for your patience as we are in a closed meeting. So, thank you for allowing us the grace to get up here and get started. If you will now, please join us in a moment of silence as I catch my breath. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, if you would like to join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. I would like to now call for approval of our proposed agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
A second. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you. We are now going to move on to the first opportunity for comments from the community. We offer two opportunities. The first being right now, we do have some people in the media center. And then we will check in after that to see if there's anybody signed up online. So, we do have a list of people, and I do believe the first one on our list is Ms. Catherine Tilak. So, please come up to the podium if you'll state your full name, your address. And you're limited, or we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Catherine Tilak. I will email my address to the board. I go by Kate. Has my time started? And I support the treatment of transgender and non-binary students document. And I'm going to read a list written by my 10-year-old child. I support this public school system and say thank you to the instructors and counselors who have supported my child. To all LGBTQ+ people, I say, I see you, you belong, and I love who you are. At home, my child and I are working through this book called Do the Work, an anti-racist activity book. If you are white and you have not started your anti-racist work, then you are upholding white supremacy. It isn't either/or. This book includes LGBTQ people of color such as Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Polly Murray, Audrey Lord, Bayard Rustin, Alicia Garza. It's important to make the connection that white supremacy is the reason LGBTQ rights are destroyed. As a white person, I have white privilege, which is why my anti-racism work is essential. But as a queer person, the ideology of white supremacy wants me gone. It does not want me to exist, or any LGBTQ person of any age, which includes our trans, non-binary, and other LGBTQ students. This is why we have the Don't Say Gay law in Florida and why 162 anti-LGBTQ bills have been introduced this year across the United States. Our document, called The Treatment of Transgender and Non-binary Students, is Charlottesville's version of that larger conversation about who gets to exist. And words must be put into action. My non-binary child has written the list that I'm going to read. It's called Three Things I Want to See. And Zee has also coined a term, Pride+, which is a stand-in term for an umbrella term for LGBTQ, because that's just a lot of letters for everyone to say. This is called Three Things I Want to See. One, teachers to make it clear what Pride+ bullying is and how to avoid it. Sorry, my voice is shaking a little bit. I'm gonna start it again. Teachers to make it clear what Pride+ bullying is and how to avoid it. Two, for everyone to use correct pronouns and respect them. Three, teachers to be trained to see and stop when Pride+ kids are being hurt or bullied and to not just make them say sorry, but also to tell them why it is not okay. And I believe that "them" refers to any person participating in teasing or bullying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ms. Esposito.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gurley and School Board members. I am Christina Esposito. I am a GRT at Johnson, and I live in the city. I'd like to thank the School Board for the ongoing discussion regarding collective bargaining for our Charlottesville City School employees. While we had hoped to have an answer by now, I believe it is far more important to get this right than to be wrong and on time. I've come to once again express my strong support for broad collective bargaining rights for all of our employees. Seventy-two percent of our staff and an even larger percentage of teachers signal their support for the same. I suspect that it can feel like we don't really need collective bargaining because the School Board and Dr. Gurley's administration are more than open to discussion. Dr. Gurley isn't just talking the talk, he's walking the walk when it comes to creating a culture of care. While I can look at this school year and know we will once again face the challenge of teaching during a pandemic, as well as a shortage of staff, most notably in the Transportation Department, I am confident that we will be supported by this board and administrative team. That has not always been the case. And though we might want to, we cannot assume that will always be the case moving forward. Though I've previously mentioned these issues when speaking before you, they bear repeating. There was a time when the message from Central Office was that we were lucky to have a job and that we shouldn't complain or ask questions. There was a time I was absolutely stopped from speaking to a School Board member by my principal. Countless decisions have been made about what is best for our classrooms and for our students without ever involving us in the discussion. We are, in fact, better together. A current issue of concern is the proposed changes to the COVID leave policy. According to the documents posted online, it looks as if the policy is being changed to include five days of COVID leave per contract year. That is not enough. It is barely enough for someone who is single. For parents and caregivers, five days won't cover a single COVID outbreak within a household. This will disproportionately affect our families with young children as they are more likely to have used up many of their sick days for maternity leave. I have a few questions about this change in policy. How much COVID leave was used last year? Were there instances where the Division felt it was being abused? What would the projected cost be to continue a policy that guaranteed our staff that guaranteed our staff never felt as if they had to come in when they were sick because they had run out of sick time? I know that unlimited COVID leave coupled with teachers not wearing masks is a conversation worth having. I'm sure this is something that can be worked out, but had collective bargaining been in place, we would have been part of this conversation from the beginning. I do not doubt this board's or this administration's commitment to our students, our community, or our staff. I believe that you truly want to create a culture of care in Charlottesville City. A culture of care means knowing that we all want what is best for our students, and by guaranteeing us an equal seat at the table, you trust us enough to make that a reality, no matter who is in charge.
Thank you. And next, we have Ms. Shannon Gillikin.
My name is Shannon Gillikin. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Jackson Villa and a CCS parent. Good afternoon, School Board members and Dr. Gurley. The beginning of school is coming soon, and as a parent of three CCS students and an educator, I would like to urge you to continue mitigation efforts in our schools. Masking, weekly testing, COVID leave, and the Test to Stay program were essential to keeping our schools open and adequately staffed last year. Local cases are currently five and a half times higher than they were last year. And the CDC considers us in a high level of transmission. Mitigation should match transmission levels, and right now, we need you to keep us and our children safe. I know some of the measures aren't popular, but it's not your job to do what is popular, but to use your power for the good of the most vulnerable among us. Tonight, I'd also like to express gratitude for the time each of you have given to meet with me and others about collective bargaining. Our conversations on the phone and coffee shops and over Zoom have been honest and beneficial. Thank you for coming to these conversations with trust and especially for your willingness to ask hard questions and to admit when we don't have all the answers yet. We are moving into new territory by pursuing collective bargaining, and you are being courageous by sifting through all the information and deciding what is best for our educators and ultimately our students. There is a path forward for collective bargaining, and I believe we can make a compromise that makes us better together. You all are setting a bar for future School Board members and superintendents, and I just ask you to keep leaning into this work and meeting us with trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
Hello, my name is Jessica Taylor. I'm a reading specialist at Clark and president of the CEA, and my pronouns are she/her. Good afternoon, Dr. Gurley and members of the board. On April 14th, the CEA presented a resolution for collective bargaining to this board. Backed by 72% of all CCS employees, this resolution asks the board to codify our rights as public sector workers to have a seat at the table when making decisions about matters that directly impact our work. As of today, the board has not voted in favor of the resolution. I have to be honest, when we first started this process in April, I thought we'd have a resolution before the end of the school year. We have a superintendent who has said that he supports educators and wants to promote a culture of care. The board has collectively and individually, publicly and privately, said that they support educators and collective bargaining. So, what is stopping us from moving forward? It wasn't until I stepped back and took stock of what we have done in the 120 days since the resolution was presented that I was able to see that we have been moving forward. Members of the board, CEA, and Dr. Gurley met many times over the summer to process together what collective bargaining could look like in Charlottesville. Members of the board have individually had conversations with CEA members over the summer to talk about bargaining. And I know that you have met as a board and talked amongst yourselves about bargaining. So, my statement to you tonight is to thank you and to give a public testament to the work you have done so far. Very few school boards across the state have been willing to engage with employees to the level we have in Charlottesville, and even fewer superintendents that encourage communication and collaboration to the degree that Dr. Gurley does. There has never been a doubt that every member of the board and Dr. Gurley want what is best for the families and employees of CCS. All of this is progress. And honestly, it's what collective bargaining is. It's working together towards a common goal. And it's talking about hard things, and it's making difficult decisions. And it's being vulnerable and saying, I don't know. And it's uncomfortable sometimes, but it's a partnership between you and us that makes everyone stronger. So, as we embark on another school year in a pandemic, please continue to ask us what we think. Please rely on us for input and continue to partner with us in conversations about collective bargaining. A resolution that meets the needs of both the Division and the employees cannot be far away because I know everyone in this room agrees that we are all better together. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Horn.
Good evening. I am Jen Horn. I teach English and public speaking at CHS. I'm a Charlottesville City Schools parent, and I am really glad to be here this evening. I'm not gonna take up my three minutes. I am someone who fiercely believes in speaking up when I feel disquiet, but I also fiercely believe in expressing gratitude, and I am grateful. I sent out an email to all the board members, and I heard back in eloquent and interested and detailed ways. Dr. Gurley has done nothing but reach out to teachers in very important ways, and it has given me hope. So, I thank you so much for all that you have done, and I look forward to when we can codify this and make it so that teachers' voices are truly valued and their input is absolutely essential. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, that's on our list, but I do see that we have someone else approaching the podium, and you're welcome to do so. So, please, again, just state your name, and we'll have you write your address, and then you'll be limited to your three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Nomi Davi. I'm a parent of two children in Charlottesville City Schools, Jackson Villa and Beaufort, so shout out to those. And I'm also a member of the Charlottesville Coalition for Gun Violence Prevention. And on behalf of our group, I want to extend a sincere and very warm thank you to Ms. Torres, to Dr. Gurley, and to the whole School Board for everything that you've done to combat violence, the threat of gun violence in our schools and our community, and to work with us to support the work that we're doing and to work with us on a number of initiatives. So, we're very pleased to say that we're going to be participating in the Back to School Bash. We are going to, with the support of Dr. Gurley, we're going to be organizing a number of forums aimed at promoting awareness about responsible gun storage and involving panels of pediatricians and policymakers for parents and for school communities. And we also look forward to Dr. Gurley continuing to communicate the importance of responsible gun storage as an essential means to prevent gun violence, the scourge of gun violence in our schools and our communities. As we all know from the statistics that circulate, the vast majority of mass shootings at school occur because the assailant has brought a weapon from their home. So, we understand the importance of responsible gun storage, and we greatly, greatly thank the School Board for its support of our work. So, thank you very much. On behalf of myself as a parent and on behalf of the group, I'm really, really grateful to you for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anybody else in the media center who would like to make comment, you're invited to do so now. And then we also have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. And I will now, I don't see that there's anybody signed up in or online Zoom, so we will, at this point, we'll close public comment, and we will keep moving. So, thank you, everybody. I will now entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please.
Can I just ask a question about the School Board assignments, committee assignments? I was just looking at it. It seems like the VSBI delegates are you and me? And I don't think that's true. So, I just, before we go approving that, maybe we change that to reflect the reality. Because I don't think I'm a VSBI delegate, and I don't, maybe you're not.
I think you were alternate last year. If you would like to.
Are you the VSBI? I thought Mr. Bryant was.
So, I'm the delegate.
You're the regional chair, okay. Okay, never mind. I withdraw my concern there.
And I leaned into you a couple of years ago. I think you stepped down. So, are you okay with that?
Sure. Just, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any questions, concerns? All right, all in favor? I know, I just. All right, I apologize because I got so excited that we were back here meeting that I did miss the actual roll call of board members. I think it's apparent that we're all here, but if we need to do this formally, Madam Clerk, would you mind calling roll, and I apologize?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morrisberger?
Here.
Ms. Dooley?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Present.
Ms. McKeever?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Present.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes, I am here. Thank you so much. All right, so now we are, we have moved down to 8.0 action items. Dr. Gurley, did you want to?
I move that we approve.
Oh, I thought we did that. I am like.
I'll move.
All in favor. I think we had a second, Dr. Kraft seconded it, and I asked, and.
This is related to the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, all in favor.
I.
Sorry. Any opposed? All right, now we're moving forward. All right, Dr. Gurley, action items.
So, we will now have Ms. Swift come up. This is our second reading of the updated policies.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gurley. During the June School Board meeting, staff presented various policies for your review. And so, at this time, we would like for the board to take action on these policies.
I move the approval of the policies as outlined in the June meeting. I move the approval of the policies as outlined in the June meeting.
I'll second that.
Hey, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Dr. Kraft.
Just a quick clarification. The policy on electronic attendance at board meetings was tweaked, was that just a? I'm sorry, I couldn't find it today to look at.
Dr. Kraft, you need to speak into the microphone.
Change substantive change in that policy?
I believe that reflects the new law.
I'm sorry, can you speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. It is summer, isn't it? I think this is, yeah. Anyway, the policy on electronic attendance at board meetings, I was wondering, you know, if on that one, were there any substantive changes that we need to know about from that policy? Any changes?
What, I know it was updated to reflect the amendment of VA Code 2.23707.
And those changes were related to, so when we were in the pandemic, we were, school boards were doing a lot of electronic participation. And so, that code now reflects what the electronic participation is. And so, I think we went from a place where no one was doing anything virtually to we started doing it virtually during the pandemic, and now it's just giving guidance to what the electronic participation can look like because that was not there originally.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so, take a motion. You moved. I asked. I'm sorry. All in favor? Great, any opposed? Thank you.
All right, and so, Madam Chair, so as you know, of course, and we've heard from our, and we've heard from our esteemed educators today that we have been working collaboratively towards a collective bargaining agreement. And therefore, since the School Board and CEA are still working through the process, we will need a motion, so we will need a motion so that we can grant an extension to continue to work collaboratively with CEA. And as a point of reference, because the 120-day window would have been next, will be next week. So, an extension is required.
Madam Chair, I move that we extend the deadline for responding to collective bargaining.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And for what it's worth, I don't know, Ms. Taylor, in one of our meetings, you know, that we had with C E A, this was discussed, so this was not something that was a surprise to C E A. They knew that we would be asking for this extension. So, and we look forward to continuing our work. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Thank you so much. We are now at items for discussion.
All right, we will have our very own Kim Powell come and talk to us about pupil transportation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board and Dr. Gurley. So have some updates for you this evening. Some of the information you see will be information we discussed back in June at your last meeting, but there's also a lot of new information here as well. Leslie, do you want me to advance the slides from here? I think I can. Yep, okay. So, an overview of where we are now, but actually now, in this case, was June the twelfth, the last time we were together. I thought it was worthwhile to put this, keep this slide in the deck so that the public, who may not have, you know, looked at the materials from that meeting in June, would see what you were looking at when we started this process of preparing for the new school year. So to give context, at best, since the March twenty twenty school closures, the statewide school closures for the pandemic, since that point, the best we have been with our pupil transportation situation was, we got up to sixteen pupil drivers. We had six cat drivers assisting. And so at our best, this past spring, we had twenty-two routes serving all three of our tiers, elementary, middle and high. And our waitlist was cut to just south of two hundred students. Also, for context, the absolute minimum number of drivers that we've ever been able to get by with, and this was where we were pre-COVID, was twenty-four. And those of you who may remember those times, remember that many of our buses were packed, to say the least. So twenty-four is a bare, bare minimum. The best we got to this past spring was twenty-two. And we always have had historically around twenty-two hundred students, between twenty-two and twenty-three hundred students who request transportation any given school year. On June first, or as of June first, I was notified that we had two pupil drivers retiring. Two additional pupil drivers had resigned, giving their two weeks notice so that their time with us was going to end at the end of the school year. One of the cat drivers who had been helping was retiring. Two cat drivers had expressed they would no longer drive for pupil next school year. And two additional pupil resignations were rumored and pending, and they did happen. So as of the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we only had about ten drivers back in June that we could identify as being available for pupil. Coincidentally, that is the exact same number where we were back in September of twenty twenty, when we were trying to figure out how to get everybody back to school in person. It was, it was a tough day when, when we got that news. Okay, so looking, looking ahead to where we are now. Maybe I'm not driving. I'm pushing the buttons, but it's not going anywhere. There we go. So where we are today, and this was August first, but I checked today, Thursday's actually a day we have a bunch of transportation meetings. These are still our numbers. We have six pupil drivers. We have four in the onboarding slash training process with maybe one who's going to be ready to go before the start of school. And it is very uncertain. At this time, we don't have any commitment that there would be any cat drivers available to help. Cat also has their own staffing issues as well. So as of this moment, Pupil Transportation Office is building routes based on six to eight drivers to start the school year. And capacity is being prioritized for students who require special, who require transportation as far as, as part of their special education plan. And then all, along with that, are alternative placement students. So as we continue monitoring our own situation and learning from the C D L and C D L S shortage that continues to persist across the state and the nation, several things became apparent. One, significantly higher advertising expenditures and giving more money and benefits to drivers has not provided a sustainable solution so far. And it doesn't appear that that's going to be the answer. It's part of an answer, but it's not the answer. It's not, certainly not going to be everything we need. A combination of significant societal forces came together to create this situation. It's not any one thing. It's complicated. Schools can't solve it alone, and it is taking a comprehensive community effort to change our course. And we, the city and schools, just have had to look at what other cities have done to address this problem, even prior to the pandemic, because people should understand this critical shortage of bus drivers, particularly in cities. It was happening in some localities like around Philadelphia and stuff, even before the pandemic hit. So we have been, we looked to, I looked to other localities for ideas to move forward. These are just some examples of different models we looked at. So anyone who would care to do so on your own time, you know, pull up the presentation, you might find some of these links interesting. But here's sort of the, the assessment close to home, if you will, in Virginia. What you see here are a listing of comparable metropolitan areas, cities, if you will, around the Commonwealth of Virginia and what their walk zones are. And some of these may have even changed. Beth Chuck reminded me, some of these, these localities may have even expanded walk zones. We have not bothered to look. We know they certainly, in the context of this, have not made smaller walk zones. I can say that with confidence. But this is from a while back when we did the research. And in the little box, you see what our walk zones had been in Charlottesville. So we had been at point three miles for K four, point five miles for Walker Beaufort, and point seven miles for C H S. We, in our national and statewide research, haven't, had not found any communities anywhere that had walk zones that small. The average walk zone that you, if you average the numbers there for Albemarle through Waynesboro, you'll find that the average walk zone for elementary schools is point nine four miles, a little over nine tenths of a mile, and a little over one and a quarter mile for all other grades when you go beyond elementary. The work we've done through the summer to adjust our walk zones takes our elementary walk zone to three quarters of a mile, or approximately a twenty-minute walk. And we look at the middle and high school level at one and a quarter miles or up to approximately a thirty-minute walk. That's the way we approach setting our walk zones. So what is the new, the impact of the new walk zones? I already mentioned the times, the twenty minutes and thirty minutes. It's important to keep in mind, when you look at our walk zones, in some cases, we did round up to get to the end of a cul-de-sac or a natural neighborhood boundary. In a few cases with C H S students, we did extend walk zones as high as one point six miles if a path is very walkable. And we have stayed within or very close to our projected time estimates for the walks, because we feel like the time is as important as the distance. We've also done a lot of walking this summer, and I want to take a moment to thank not only my colleagues who've done a lot of this walking and checking, but also community members. It's been, for as hard as this has been, it's been a really great experience having so many community members partner with us in, in problem solving. And I'm just, I'm not going to name names. That's a very dangerous thing to do, because I'll leave some great people out, but it's, just feel, we feel a lot of gratitude. So our bus eligibility is based on a combination of distance from the school and need. And I really want to, I hope this works. I want, I want you all to see this really cool website if you haven't been looking at it. It's charlesfoldschools.org forward slash transportation. I cannot give enough credit to Beth Chuck and Amanda Corman for the work they've done building this out. So when you go here, sorry. Okay. As you scroll down, one of the things we're most excited, there's a ton of information on this website. But this link here, and also further down here, oh, the new walking maps. New and improved walking maps are really nice. Again, Beth Chuck and her team, great work there in a very short order. But there, that link up top or down here, there's a section, a whole section about it, says, I've heard that the city's making many improvements, and you can hit this link, and it takes you to, the table's embedded here. And by school, you can see all these pedestrian improvements that are underway. You can see if they're completed, planned or scheduled. You can see our crossing guard status, and I have another slide devoted just to crossing guards. So I'll go, go over that in a minute. Sorry, probably messed up picking this up. Anyway. All right, so this is a really neat thing to look at, and Brendan Duncan, Sam Sanders, the city team just really appreciate the work. This is the separate page that shows the same table, but it gives you a feel of the scale of what's been happening. We've been moving fast with our city partners, so. Okay, Leslie, now I've got to get back to the presentation. Can you get me there? Okay, thanks. So the community can use that webpage to stay up to date on all that. Okay, whoops, something happened. There we go. So crossing guards, just to give some context, last year, we covered nine intersect crossing locations. Our current plan, we're expanding out to nineteen, seventeen are stationary, and two are corridors that we're looking at. We've been talking about something called a walking school bus. As we look at some of the numbers coming out of the neighborhoods, we may do a more of like a, almost like a hall monitor thing where you have mostly school staff, in addition to the crossing guards stationed at different locations. So you have line of sight to line of sight, because Friendship Court, for example, could have over a hundred kids walking on any given day. They had a walking school bus all last year that started at over thirty kids. But, and we don't know yet, the front office staff there, Ayesha Anderson, does a great job reaching out to the families, finding out what their plans are. But when you think of that high volume of students, it's just like the overcrowding we had on the physical buses from Friendship Court to Clark. We're going to have that kind of volume with the walking. And so we're thinking, instead of trying to organize them in walking groups, if we start at the clubhouse and have them walking kind of from adult line of sight up to the next adult, they'll form family groups and friend groups. That might be a better way to go. Dr. Gurley, in his wisdom, suggested we're going to test out whatever we do and have another event there. But just as such a large number of kids, the other place we're going to have a similar situation is Hardy Drive over to Vinable with our younger students in a large number. We will have a crossing guard at Tenth and Page. But again, whether we walk with them in groups, or whether we do like this line of sight, okay, walk from this person to the next person on the next block, and the adults will be able to see them. We just, this is new, but we're going to figure it out. So back to where we are with crossing guards. Our current assigned is ten out of the nineteen, which leaves us nine open, but we have three interviews this week. I know we did one of those three today. We have three additional individuals who are interested but haven't put the application in, so we're following up with that outreach. And then we have six people who are interested in doing it as long as they have a pairing, like they want to be paired with someone. And that's great. So that could cover effectively three more spots. So that's at least nine more solid leads we have to fill that, the last nine spots that we need to have open, plus our school staff. And so we have some, some folks there. So as opposed to the bus driver equation, which I can never balance, we got a real shot, a good shot at balancing our need for crossing guards and supervision on certain routes with, with what we need. So Jason Lee's been doing a lot of work with this this week, and we're feeling very hopeful that we'll have everything in place. So I wanted to give you that snapshot. So this is a look at the bus situation. Now, this is the data as of July twenty-first. Please note, enrollments, we know were not yet completed on that day. Asterisk, there's some asterisks on there somewhere, or maybe there aren't. That actually must be another column that's not on. But anyway, there was the need for wheelchair accommodations reduces the capacity of buses. You have to keep that in mind. And then we were assuming right now, we were hoping to have nine to eleven buses per tier, but I don't know that we're exactly at that point right now. But what you see here are the total enrollment numbers. The enrollment within the school boundary, meaning it's not like elementary kids who are asking to go out of zone. If you go out of zone, you're typically not, you're not eligible for bus transportation and so forth. You can see our old walk zone count was three hundred and forty-seven. Our new walk zone count is one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight. It's over seven hundred and ninety kids-ish. I mean, these walk zones are making a big difference in spreading our available resources to serve the city. You can see eligible riders, and then you see our bus requests. And if you total up that bus request, it's right around that. This was our bus request last year. It was right around that twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred total students.
Oops, sorry. Do you mind if I ask a question at this, just at this slide? So can you speak, maybe you were going to, at the Clark numbers as far as eligible riders and the requests?
So Clark is a very small school zone. The requests don't have any regard with, for whether they're eligible or not. That was just what was requested. And I didn't, thank you for pointing that out. This was just some data that Amy Herndon in the Transportation Office had been working up, because she was trying to figure out what, how things would look when we balance out the numbers. But as a, the Clark zone, when you look at it on the, like a map from Versatrans, and where the dots are within the boundary, because Clark is already such a small school zone, there are very few students who are eligible for bus service for Clark. And that's just the nature of how the Clark school zone itself is the smallest in the city.
Right, I guess my concern potentially would be that those who have requested it, like if somebody reaching out to them to find out if they're extenuating circumstances, or I mean, that's just a big discrepancy when, you know, compared to the rest of the
Right.
the schools.
So two, two points, two things I can speak specifically to Clark and in general. So on Tuesday, was a little later than we'd hoped because of the glitch with school messenger, but we sent out the customized messages to every family that said your student, and if you had three students, you got three messages, because you could have students that one would be in the walk zone and another going to a different school is eligible for bus service. So the letters said, your student, the name, is in the walk zone for your school, or your student, the name, is eligible for bus service. And so they were customized in that way. And then there was a bunch of information about where to get more information, and if you had questions. And in that, there was, you know, suggesting to reply to walkzones@charlesfoldschools.org. And we would get feedback from that, and we would be able to address those. I can tell you that of the thousands of messages that went out, as of this afternoon, we had twenty-one that came back. And we're doing individual responses for each of those. That doesn't count, and I don't have a way to track the calls that are going into the schools and that type of thing, but we did like F A Q and guidance documents so that the front offices would know how to handle each call that comes in. And sometimes it's something that needs to come back to me so I can work with transportation and see, is there an issue with this? Was it an error? Because there are going to be mistakes, but I have to say, we've been shocked that even the couple that were questioning the zones, when we looked at it, they just didn't know that there was a cut through, or they didn't understand that, you know, what their walk route was. But that's not to say we won't encounter issues. Clark, Ayesha Anderson, who I mentioned earlier, she's doing personal outreach with all of her families to find out what their plan is. And I don't think she's alone in that. But anytime you see a discrepancy like that, that's the type of thing we would look for the school office to do, is just reach it out to the families and say, hey, do you have your, have your plan? Because I, I give our schools and our educators, our community, a lot of credit, that they know our students, they know our families. Our L team, phenomenal. And a lot of, several of the messages that came back were from our L community, but they actually had more questions about registration and re-registration than they did about whether they were in the walk zone or eligible for the bus. Those things, they weren't disputing, but they would be like, thank you for reaching out. I'm having this issue with Power School. I'm having this issue with re-registration. So we got a lot of that type of feedback.
Um, just along that line, do you, are you feeling like the, you know, the immigrant families and the E L L families are understanding this situation?
So I had several messages, again, of the twenty-some, I don't know if it was quite as many as half, but a lot of them came back. And it was clear English wasn't their first language. Some of them came back to me in Spanish. So I mean, we're definitely reaching those populations, and it wasn't just our Latino community. So I definitely see just from this brief, you know, what happened just in the past few days, that it went out, and we're definitely getting a lot of our folks who speak, English is not their first language. They're reaching out to us and, and we're able to give them support. But also, again, I know that our L team and those teachers and our coordinator, they, there's a lot of outreach that happens there.
And I will also add that our outreach activity to the Friendship Court community was our highest attended outreach activity, and that was a very high representation of our L's community. And what we quickly realized is that the language was a barrier. For example, I think I realized in that moment, calling, calling it a walking school bus is confusing when you go to. For example, I think I realized in that moment, calling, calling it a walking school bus is confusing when you go to translate that. I mean, because if we're saying there's no school bus, but then we're translating saying there will be a walking school bus, that's very confusing. And so that was one of the initial things that we recognized, but our, we had a great turnout and participation. From our L's families. And I think we heard the most concerns from them. And I think we have to acknowledge and be very appreciative of the concerns because I think that's how we get better. And so we will be differentiating our support. And so we know we are going to push forward with our walking school buses, but we're also going to make sure that parents have the resources. And that's in this conversation too about the boots, the umbrellas, the things of that nature. So yes, we have had engagement activities with our L's families.
Yeah, it probably would have been helpful if we, the term just recently came up, this idea of a coverage corridor. Where you have just higher level of coverage all along a route, but maybe not walking with the students when you have such large groups. So again, focusing on ideas to move forward, we want to remind everyone about Charlottesville Community Bikes as a resource for bikes and helmets. If, if families choose that they believe the best way for their child to get to and from school is with the bike. I want to give a shout out to our Safe Routes to School partnership, Kyle Rodland with the city. He's been a great partner throughout the pandemic and even before then and working in our schools. The thing I really want to highlight on this, this is where the term walking school bus came from, by the way, though. It's a safe routes to school term. And then they also talk about bike trains, which again is the idea of an adult leading a group of students who are cycling to and from school. And Clark had a little bit of that going on too, uh, in the pandemic. But I think the, the key point from this slide is, is something that I encountered in a, as we were looking at different models across the country and just researching all of this. This statistic came out in multiple places. In the last forty years, we have seen students who walk and bike to school decline from almost fifty percent. In around nineteen seventy, down to thirteen percent in two thousand and nine. And I took this exact quote from Fairfax County Public Schools, but. That same statistic is prevalent in a lot of different places when you start to research this and. And you hear it from adults when they talk, whoa, you know, the old, that people joke about walking uphill both ways in the snow and, you know, when they were young, but. There has been a shift and I think in that change, we have lost some things with physical activity and, and health. And especially when you're battling screen time concerns for kids. And so I just take a moment to realize there, there can be a lot of good that comes from this. Although that certainly wasn't what drove the, the change. I, I think looking for what good can come of it is, is an important thing to do. So I've already, I think I've already dropped, did the mic drop ta-da thing around infrastructure improvements, but this is a slide that was back in your June deck. And I want everyone to know, we took this seriously. The city's taking it seriously and we're, the, the work is being done. There's much. Left to do, but the, the conversations and the, the work and the partnership has definitely got a good head of steam. And we're very hopeful it would continue. And I, there's another link to this stuff I just showed you. Okay. Still talking about ideas to move forward, public transportation, catching the cat for our families with younger students, but also. For if family chooses for their middle years or their high school students, they could catch the cat, just the student. And consider that a safe route to school. And so. On our website, that the transportation page, there's a section devoted to cat. And I'd like to thank Matthew Gillick and he took the initiative to kind of really research a route for his, one of their, his students who's going to Walker from where they live. And did, put together a really great format. And now we're trying to emulate that for some other routes, for some other areas to make a ready reference. For families to help them understand how cat can be a resource for their family. To get to and from school. So we're really excited about that. And again, when we think about thing, good things that can come from this, hopefully. The cat system can continue to improve and expand and serve all of the community in, in new and better ways as a result of this change. So wrapping up, our keys moving forward. Expanding to more typical walk zones or family responsibility zones, whatever you want to call them, that, that's, that's critical. To try to balance out our supply and demand situation. Improve pedestrian and biking infrastructure, also key. Improve cat service. And I'll say improving cat information. So people understand the cat system better. There is a, an app and a link in the documentation that tell you how to like know where the cat bus is and, and getting our students familiar with that. Helps prepare them to become public transit users for the future. And I have not forgotten the multi-passenger non-CDL vehicles have continued to do research on that. Chris. Crystal Riddell, with the city with sustainability and also Harold Young, who's over Fleet, had some great conversations with them. I've expanded the conversation and research with the Highlands to look not just the, the type A options, but also vans, which may be a more affordable solution. And we'll certainly continue to talk about that. One thing that became clear when we talked in June. I was kind of still in full on panic mode from the, so I was just throwing everything out there and see what would stick. To try to make things better. And you guys were all supportive saying, just make it the best you can. Go and do. I did not know in that moment that changing our walk zones would get around, make a difference of around eight hundred students. That calmed me down a little bit. We still need to pursue these smaller vehicles and we still will be coming to you with proposals and ideas. And one of the most important things we can do now is look at how our waitlist settle out. School by school as we, you know, get our routes set for the new school year. You see who's make, you know, who's making it to school, how they're making it to school, what is the waitlist situation at each school? And where would smaller vehicles potentially make the biggest difference doing sprint runs or out and back? So we can make, make the best decision, whether it's gas or whether it's electric, where we would, where we would deploy such resources. We did move forward with the purchase of two gas type A buses because we are going to need them for athletics. The CDL crisis is also impacting our sports situation. And one of the easiest things we can do. Is get the smaller vehicles that some of our coaches can drive. And you can't at this point, taking an electric vehicle, running it all day and then counting on it to go to Louise and stuff. We, we were not ready for that. So we knew, we knew we needed some gas buses. So we've ordered two. And so. I'll let people decide if they want to read the quotes or not. But again, back in September twenty twenty, we were here kind of trying to hang on to what we had. Saying this is the least imperfect solution set for moving forward. That was kind of where we were. And as we discussed in June, now it's. The discussion is really how do we move forward as a community committed to a new solution set that's sustainable? And so thank you for your support in this really important effort.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you heard from Mrs., Ms. Johnson?
I had no several.
Joy Johnson.
I spoke with her at, at West Haven in the community center about the path from Friendship Court to. Like we, we, I had a discussion with her there about like the optimal route from Friendship Court over to Beaufort, that type of thing, but.
No, this is something else she called you in reference to. We do know that eventually those students, South First Street.
I got that.
You got that already?
We got that covered. Yes.
Okay, alright.
Those, those at South First Street are just going to be temporarily at Hardy Drive. Right, two to three years, but they still will need to go to Jackson Via. Yeah, we need to do that to maintain our. Schools. Yeah, lots of things. So that's been addressed. And I already have the list from CHRA. So we know who those students are. We have a shared list. Thank, thank you for asking.
Any other questions? Dr. Krep?
I wondered if we have gotten any feedback from the drivers who indicated that they don't want to return. Even the ones that are retiring and, you know, just to. Understand if, if it had something to do with the actual work of driving the pupils rather than other factors.
So unfortunate, one of the disadvantages of, of us not having the transportation. Under us like, like a typical school division is we were not really able to. To get at that information in a systematic way. So I really, I, I don't have a good lens on that, I'm afraid.
Okay. And just one other question. This is my mom had thinking, but I'm thinking about like raincoats and umbrellas and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I should have made a slide. We've been working with. Denise Johnson and Bianca as well in the family, with the family engagement team and equity team. Identifying what are the supplies we need to help ensure that students have what they need to get to and from school in a walking situation. And so we have just ordered like these cute little like galoshes and a bunch of sizes that go over your shoes. The rain ponchos, the umbrellas. I hope we got the clear ones. I told Julie that's the ones I wanted, that you can see through, you know, as you're walking. We've ordered flashlights, different supplies, just to make sure. And we have, through their hard work, that store set up so that like. Not only could crossing guards or, you know, people who cover the corridors or whatever you want to call our folks that are out. Those folks or teachers can recognize needs and put in orders to help make sure that our students have the things they need. To stay warm and dry. Uh, when they're walking. And fun fact, Jason Lee and I were at Clark having a meeting about the walking, walking school bus and all of that. And it poured down rain while we were sitting there. And I, I eventually just bolted for the car because I needed to get back to the office. But it was one of those days. I'm like, a day like this, we need, we would need to delay the release of walkers. And you look at those days when the radar hits and it turns red or yellow. So. You know, whereas when we were providing more bus service and kids are just sprinting to the bus, like I had to sprint to the car. And that's one of the questions we get a lot, like what are you going to do? So we have to realize that this will color our decisions moving forward about weather. And the whole community needs to understand that. You know, lots of questions have been received about snow on sidewalks and what happens when the community is not responsible for clearing their sidewalks and. You know, we're having those discussions, we're mindful of that, and we're going to have to really keep a, a close eye on these things as we, as we move forward. It's, it's going to be different. The, the community is going to notice this change. They're going to see a lot more kids out walking. Potentially biking, scootering, whatever.
And just finally, thank you for everything that you've done to, you know, get this in place, to get something in place that's workable. I know it's been a huge lift and a lot of work.
Huge team effort, truly. Nothing of any consequence happens without a lot of people involved and it, it. Our office, Annex, City Hall. It's a team effort, the community members. So it's been, that has been as, as hard as it is, it's been rewarding to work with people who are all pulling together. Just trying to make it happen and do the best we can.
Thank you.
Ms. McKeever.
So I was just wondering if the city is going to give us back any money for the transportation contract?
My opinion, I think the short answer is I don't think they will. There'll be, there'll be a lot of discussion about how special needs transportation and it is, it's costing a lot more. And, you know, for what we're saving here, there's going to be discussion about that these other things are costing more, but. I do think as we move forward with budget, there's going to just need to be a more significant discussion around transportation.
Can we get like an itemized statement from the city to reflect, I mean, we, that, that transportation contract goes up every single year. Obviously, I, I feel very comfortable with our walk zones. I mean, I'm not trying to, I understand the challenge as a parent, just got a child walking. But. This, we pay for these services that are not being provided. In fact, we're asking our students and families to go on to the city buses. So. How, where's the saving? Like, how's this working?
When we've requested it, we have received some line item information, like that you could see how much the advertising budget went up and things like that. But the information we receive with regard, it shows what's budgeted for like payroll and so forth. And what I think we need to do is look more about what's budgeted, what's actual. And we just, there needs to be a deeper, a deeper dive and just a discussion about what's the most. Cost effective way to move forward. And I would put the emphasis actually on effective at this point because we, we, you know, we have to find effective solutions. And then we certainly want to be as efficient as we can be. But I think that there's need, there, I anticipate there'll be significant focus on. The questions you're asking and looking at the performance this year. And assessing where it makes sense to put, put the investments and, and what, what just makes sense overall moving forward.
I, I mean, one other thing that I would really, I, I noted the path that the Friendship Court children are going to be taking. And how you all had walked it and realized, oh, that's not a good way. So we're going to do this way. And I just think that's brilliant. I'm so grateful. I wonder if we could also kind of engage with the community on those streets. Just to say, hi, you know, maybe a flyer or something that indicates. There will be students between these hours on your street walking and we need you to be on the lookout, like. Be a safe, you know, we used to have those stars when I was a child. Obviously I'm very old. Maybe not the stars, but there was something that was like, this is a safe house. And of course, whatever, I just want all the community's eyes to be on our children. As they are walking to school. Every day we hear nightmare stories in our community about. How our drivers are just not friendly to our pedestrians and bikers. And now we're going to have children. You know, many, many more children on the streets. And I just want to ensure that our community recognizes that. A and B protects us. This is just something that we as a community has to, have to uphold and, and embrace. That we protect our children and our pedestrians and our bikers. It's just the way it has to be. We cannot. We've, too many children are at risk and we need to really protect them as a community. And. So I hope that we will, I mean, first, I think we should engage with the community members that are on the paths that we expect our children to be walking. But also I hope that our community in general will support the division in this effort. I do not think it's a big ask to ask our students to walk seven tenths of a mile or a mile. And a quarter. I think it's going to be great for the health of our community. So, but we, we can't, can't get them hurt from cars. So. We just praying about that will only get us so far. We have to protect our students who are walking to school. Biking, they also bike, they will violate the road rules. Like there are things that. Children are going to be doing. We just have to have a lot more grace in our space around pedestrians and bikers. But especially for our children. So I just want to give a little lecture on that because I. We just have seen it far too often. And with more students walking, I'm just really afraid. And that's what I want to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, thank you so much for your work. As you have mentioned, there have been a lot of great. There has been a lot of great work and ideas. From community members. So a big shout out to all of them as well. And then just a reminder that, that these things are phased, that the work that the city is planning to do is phased. So they're trying to get out and do certain things. Right away. And unfortunately, you know, it's not a magic wand where everything can be done immediately. But, you know, I encourage everybody, if you see something that doesn't feel right, you've lived in this community, you've seen things happen. To please reach out to us, reach out to the city, share those things. You know, if, if family members. Know there are routes that are unsafe, or if you have concerns, of course, please, you know, elevate them to us. But then also turn to your principal and, and to the school, because there might be some thoughts or, you know, or some ideas that are, that are going on there as far as PTOs. And as Ms. McKeever said, it, it's going to take all of us to really to, you know, to keep everybody safe. So, but thank you. Everybody who's, who's contributed to this.
And before we move forward, before we move forward with that, I, I do want to thank, I do want to thank Ms. Powell. You know, Ms. Powell, Ms. Chuck, Ms. Corman, Mr. Lee, Ms. Green. And the city. I mean, because this has been a heavy lift. We didn't just wake up one day and say, we want to do walking zones. We, I mean, we literally closed the school doors and then we. We commenced doing this work and, and I agree, it's going to take the entire community. And it's one of those things where you, if you see something, say something. I don't want people sitting on their hands. This is one of those opportunities where we have to keep our students safe. And I think that what I've charged our team with, we're going to be more visible than ever. Especially as we roll this out. I mean, we got to make sure that our students understand, our families understand. And we, we're going to meet them exactly where they are. And so we, we all may be crossing guards at some point, if that's what it takes. Because. Because the bare minimum will not be acceptable. So. Alrighty. Next up, we have our professional learning opportunities. And this will be by our newly inducted Jessica Ford coming to us from Atlanta, Georgia.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening. I am Jessica Ford and I'm happy to join Charlottesville City Schools as the new professional learning coordinator. Next slide. Tonight, I would like to give an update on professional learning, which will focus on professional learning goals, professional learning framework, and theory of practice. I will outline the structure of division and site-based professional learning and go through some professional learning highlights and next steps. Next slide. So I'm going to start with the professional learning goal. Next slide. So the overall focus of professional learning is ensuring that professional learning provides ongoing opportunities that are intentional, meaningful, sustained and aligned to participants' practice and has a direct impact on student outcomes. Learning should be connected to the teacher's practice and allow collaboration and reflection. The words highlighted in blue are what we are focusing specifically on this year. Ensuring that professional learning is intentional and meaningful is imperative for staff to understand the relevance of their learning and its applicability. Making sure that it is sustainable by putting structures in place that are systematic and cohesive. Professional learning should be aligned and connected to the work of our staff and the goals of the division. Next slide. So the first goal is to provide cohesive professional learning opportunity, opportunities that are connected, relevant, and applicable to teachers' practice. Secondly, we want to increase teachers' capacity to be culturally responsive in prioritizing the needs of every, every child. Next, we want to engage in deeper learn, educators to engage in deeper learning. And lastly, we want to focus on building cohesive and efficient systems between departments. Next slide. So I will now go into the framework and theory of practice. So with those goals as the focus, it leads to the framework that is used to inform decisions around professional learning. So our goal is to increase student achievement by building teacher capacity. What we are going to do is what is located in the yellow. So to increase teacher content knowledge. According to Lee Shulman's model, teachers need to understand subject matter deeply and flexibly to help students relate one idea to another and address misconceptions. Having strong content knowledge allows teachers to see how ideas connect across fields into everyday life. It encompasses the structure of knowledge, the theories, principles, and concepts of a particular discipline. How we are going to do that is what is located in red, which is developing teacher pedagogy. So teacher pedagogy is the relationship between the culture and the techniques of learning. So in the main aim of pedagogy is to build on previous learning of the students and work on the development of skills and attitudes of the learners. It is an educator's understanding of how students learn. So by increasing content knowledge and developing pedagogy, you'll create what I call PCK or pedagogical content knowledge, where it's an integration of how teachers relate their pedagogy or how they teach or how students learn to their content knowledge, what they know about the subject matter, to create learning environments where every student can be successful. The why of why we do this is what's outlined in blue, which is the data, the data component. Every decision that we make should be informed by data. The context, which is highlighted in green, focuses on being culturally responsive and tending to the whole child, where we focus on building connections, confidence, and wellness of every student. And lastly, you see the cycle of learning on the outer circle, which these, displays the sequential process for learning. This learner cycle, which is to learn, implement and receive feedback, reflect and then improve, is important as it directly impacts classroom instruction and student learning. It is a vehicle for teacher collaboration and sharing, and the process improves the alignment of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to state standards. Next slide. This then leads us to our understand, with our understanding of goal of, of professional learning, this leads to the theory of practice, which outlines that if professional learning does not strategically design and interconnect professional learning opportunities across schools, then teachers will not have universally well-designed and well-structured, content-specific collaborative professional learning that increases their capacity. And then our students will not have equitable outcomes. Next slide. I will now move forward with discussing division and site-based PL. Next slide. In the best interest and safety of all faculty and staff, the Better Together Conference will be pivoted to a virtual platform using either Canvas or Zoom. We don't think this will be a heavy lift because our staff has, have been trained on these platforms the last two years. So the professional learning committee consisted of individuals from human race, human resources, nutrition. We had admin techs, family engagement coordinators, and central, central office staff that worked tirelessly to put together a conference-style professional learning day with over 100 sessions, community vendors, and prize giveaways. Although this conference will not happen on August 18th as scheduled in person, the vast majority of the sessions will continue virtually, and we look forward to planning another PL day in the future when it's safest to reconvene. Next slide. We have five scheduled division-based professional learning days. As I just shared, August 18th is assigned as a full division professional learning day on Zoom or Canvas. August 19th will be largely school-based with some division-led PL regarding safety. The structure of the remaining three professional learning days will remain the same with a good balance of central office, PL, and site-based PL, as well as equity foundational training for all staff members as we focus on our goal of increasing teachers' capacity to be culturally responsive. Three hours will be dedicated to central office professional learning, where staff members will rotate through three focus areas that are aligned to the strategic plan of academic excellence, safe and supportive school, and organizational support. Site-based professional learning will occur in PLCs and faculty meetings. It will be aligned to the school's professional learning plan and focus on building continuity of practice across grade levels in schools. And they will use data to inform their professional learning communities. Next slide. I will now go over some professional learning highlights. Well, as I mentioned before, we have our PL conference happening virtually. We have new teacher orientation, which will take place on August 10th through the 12th, where new teachers will obtain the tools, knowledge, and strategies needed to be successful in Charlottesville City Schools. The Leadership Advance, which is led by Dr. Gurley, is professional learning for all division leaders grounded on the work of Patrick Rencioni's Five Dysfunctions of a Team. There is calibration happening across schools as I have begun meeting with principals to discuss their professional learning goals for their respective schools. And lastly, we have a pipeline to certification for instructional assistance through JMU and PVCC. There are six IAs who have expressed interest, and I plan to work with them to complete their application this fall to begin coursework in the spring. More information will be forthcoming. Next slide. I'm now going to go over some upcoming next steps. So some upcoming next steps are to streamline and begin the professional learning series for mentors and teachers. Continue meeting with school leadership to outline site-based professional learning needs. Continue planning the use of ESER funds to enhance professional learning opportunities. We are excited about the opportunities that this grant provides us. We are currently mapping out specific. Key elements of this grant award involve professional learning that would take place beyond contract hours culminating in summer learning academies. This fall will largely be used to plan and refine these experiences with full implementation slated for summer 2023 and '24. And lastly, prepare for the September Division-wide Professional Learning Day. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you so much for that. Any questions, anybody?
I said a quick question on the professional learning series for mentors and new teachers, the mentoring program. How, how was that going to be constructed?
So Dr. Odie has sent out a mentor recommendation form to principals. We are currently working with HR to see how many step zero and step one teachers there are. Once we get that final number, we will pair the mentors with the mentees. Those mentors will be trained through a series of training just to support on how to support, effectively support new teachers.
I just feel like that was a brilliant slide with the keys and stuff. So really excellent work. It really helped me to understand and visualize. And I don't know if that makes a difference, but I welcome you and thank you for coming to our little town. And I look forward to the brilliant work ahead. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Question? Sorry. Just checking, I was doing one more scan. Nope. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. We will now have Student Rights and Responsibilities, formerly known as the Code of Conduct, presented by Dr. Odie.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley, good evening. And tonight, as Dr. Gurley just referenced, I would like to give you an update on changes to the Student Rights and Responsibilities, again, formerly known as the Student Code of Conduct. Here you see our sum and substance shown. We're going to talk about understanding behavior enhancements, which include a name change, the S-bar codes, leveled responses. And, and we also have cellphone pieces that we want to talk about, committee recognitions, and next steps. Next slide, please. So I'll start with this piece of information that I found on the VDOE website regarding understanding behavior. Behavior is communication. So we need to understand the message. Behavior has cultural context. So we need to know the story. Behavior is developmental. So we need to assess social emotional development. Behavior is learned. So we need to teach. Our goal is to make sure we understand behaviors so that we can appropriately and adequately address behaviors when they occur. Next slide, please. So we have some enhancements to the former Student Code of Conduct. Our first enhancement is the name change to the CCS Student Rights and Responsibilities. And you'll hear me call it SRNR sometimes as an abbreviation or acronym. We have seen a trend of amongst school divisions moving to names such as this, as it has more of an asset-based tone rather than a deficit-based mindset. We are hoping to create a positive and preventative approach to student conduct, starting with something as simple as a name change. In previous codes of conduct, we have talked greatly about responsibilities, but we wanted to include rights as well. When you think of student rights, we acknowledge that students do have rights such as faith for an appropriate public education, a right to a safe and orderly learning environment, and a right to be respected and treated fairly, amongst other things. And students have responsibilities that we have outlined here in the SRNR document, such as attending school regularly, knowing expectations, and conducting themselves accordingly, treating others fairly, and as they would want to be treated, and more. We have even included the rights and responsibilities of parents and staff members in this document. But for tonight's purposes, we will focus on enhancements regarding students. The SRNR explains expectations for student behavior and adult responses, thus SBARS bar, to enhance school safety and to create a fair, equitable, and supportive school environment. And it is more responsive to the changing needs of our students. We know that, that children are different than they were when we were children many years ago. Behaviors are different, needs are different. So we need to have differing understandings of the why of behavior and the responses to the different behaviors, as, as well as consistency in response to behaviors. Next slide, please. And another enhancement is the use of S-bar codes with fidelity. We must teach the behaviors we want to see in a school setting, in our school settings. These ideas lie at the foundation of the 2021 Model Guidance for Positive Preventative Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternatives to Suspension, long name, but that is from the Virginia Department of Education. And it's directly connected to the Virginia Tiered System of Supports. You've heard us talk about VTSS previously, and positive behavioral interventions and supports. You've heard of us talk about PBIS. The Student Behavior and Adult Response S-Bar Behavior Descriptors in the Model Guidance have replaced discipline, crime, and violence. DCV is the acronym for that. Those are the codes that we have all grown so accustomed to using. And research was noticed in that model guidance, and it stated that African-American students and students with disabilities were disproportionately represented in referrals to juvenile justice in Virginia schools. Students with disabilities and African-American students were being suspended at two times the rate of non-disabled white students. And we see this happening here in CCS as well. Behavior descriptors from the Model Guidance, which describes student behavior without bias and criminalization, encourage administrators to ask what harm was caused and what caused the behavior? What is the student communicating? They refocus administrative responses to behavior to being prescriptive in regard to the student's social emotional development. And they give the student the opportunity to understand the behavior's impact on the community and to repair the harm caused. The goal is to shift the mindset from criminal language to developmental approaches. This is why these behavior categories were created by the VDOE. Our staff were trained last fall regarding S-bar codes by Patrick Farrell, and we phased out the DCV codes in the fall and moved towards using the S-bar codes. This year will be our first full year of fully implementing these codes. Next slide, please. On these next two slides, I have included the new S-bar codes for your viewing. Behaviors that impede the academic progress of the student or other students, BAP or BAP. Behaviors related to school operations that interfere with the daily operation of school procedures, BSO. Behaviors of safety concern that create unsafe conditions for students, staff, and/or visitors to the school, BSC. Next slide, please. Behaviors that endanger self or others. These behaviors endanger the health, safety, or welfare of either the student or others in the school community, BESO. And behaviors that are persistently dangerous, PD, or you might see that as BPD. Next slide, please. Yet another enhancement to the SRNR involves the leveled responses to these behaviors. This is brand new for us this year. What we noticed previously was that there was inconsistency in how schools responded to similar behaviors. We've created levels of response, one, two, three, four, or five, and determined the level of response for each behavior. We are again aiming for consistency with regard to discipline and want to minimize disproportionality. Next slide, please. I've prepared a couple of examples. I've prepared a couple of examples as shown on the next two slides. For this scenario, David uh, repeatedly interrupts the teacher while she or he is talking. David does not raise his hand and is talking loudly during an independent practice. So uh, this would be a level run one response with a teacher looking at the SRNR. They see, okay, this type of behavior I would use be, I would, it's a level one response, meaning that it is a behavior that's impeding the academic progress of that student and/or other students. And so it's a classroom-based response. The teacher handles that. It's not one that would go to the principal, not one that would um, teachers would be on the walkie-talkie calling for assistance. The teacher handles it. There's intervention. There's management um, there. Next slide, please. In this scenario, we have Missy. And Missy has been caught unfortunately cheating on a test in class. So using the SRNR, the teacher looks to see what level of response does this require? And so it is a level two response that would work well for this behavior. Behaviors relating to school operations that interfere with the daily operation of school procedures. So some options for um, the adult response for a class, it could be a classroom-based response. The teacher could handle that. The teacher could call home. The teacher could work with the student. It could also be an administrative intervention that is required here. So there are some options. Um, there could be in-school suspension up to three days. Those are the level two response options that are listed in the SRNR. So you'll notice that teachers and administrators do have these options regarding the response to behaviors. But we wanted to make the options clear so that there is no second guessing as to what is an acceptable or appropriate response to certain behaviors. Next slide, please. So here you see enhancements that we have made to cellphone expectations. We've had continued concern from staff regarding student cellphone usage during class time. And what we have seen is that overuse and misuse of technologies such as cellphones can result in problems such as negative academic outcome, chronic distraction during instructional times, including phones ringing and students receiving alerts. This does happen in the middle of math class, unfortunately. So you probably know that in previous years, we have had guidance in regarding cellphones and other personal devices in the former Code of Conduct. We've had guidance there. This year, however, we are being more specific and enforcing that cellphones and other personal devices should be off and away unless otherwise directed by the teacher of that class. So we, we may, you know, just sort of coined that term off and away. It may be off and away, not a distraction. Next slide, please.
Dr. Odie, can I ask a question um, for a few slides back if it's okay?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Can I ask questions about a few slides back or do you want me to wait till the end?
Oh, you can ask now. Sure, certainly. Which slide is it?
When you were talking about the different tier two level responses and there were different ones, is there someone, like, will you all still monitor? Because there's still a little wiggle room with the punishments, you know, and how they're doled out. So do you all still, are you, do you like see it in real time and send it back or say, no, this, you know, it might not be balanced in this case or something like that?
I try to stay in communication with principals and administrators about different behaviors. When there's something minor, sorry, my glasses are fogging up. When there's something minor, like a level one or level two behavior, I may not hear about those. Um, we do give those options. If we continue to hear about or see that this student keeps getting, you know, this, they're demonstrating this level two behavior and they keep getting up to three days of suspension, we'll hear it. And so we will, we'll work with the principal and, and look at why. And remember, we're, we, you know, we're teaching the kids the behaviors that we want them to display. Uh, we also, I, again, I said our staff was trained on S-bar codes. Um, the level responses are new this year. So I want to be able to talk with them about utilizing those and being equitable and how, you know, we've got it, we can look at the data. The data tell the story about the disproportionality. I was just having a conversation earlier today as we were preparing for the Better Together Conference and all of that and looking at data. And it tells the story and we cannot continue to have, you know, students disproportionately suspended and placed in uh, ISB and ISS and all of those. So we'll, we'll continue to work with staff on um, using the appropriate response, adult response to specific behaviors. And we don't want it to be, anything to be overused.
And the other part of that is it is the range. So what we would not expect to see, so for example, uh, in the case of the student who's cheating on a test, um, there is a range. So we would not be, we would not see a student suspended out of school. But we would also not expect to see that if a student had cheated on a test and it's the first offense that the student is getting three days of in-school suspension. Because while we know that that's the range, there's also a classroom-based response that could happen initially. And that classroom-based response would, I know, our teachers do this anyway. They want to know why the student is cheating. Like, you know, I hear teachers say all the time, you have so much potential. I know you know this information. Why did you cheat? So I would not expect that the student would get, you know, a in-school suspension. But if there's something that's continues to be blatant um, and something that's intentional and under continually to undermine the process, um, the educational experience, then I think that's when we may see something more. But of course, one thing that we don't see here is we're going to be engaging families because we want to get to the why. Um, and so this doesn't tell the whole story, but we will be doing, teachers have been trained. Um, there was some brief training on the S-bar. But what's brand new that they have not received is the response levels because that's the new component of it. So we will have to do that work and which Dr. Odie already mentioned.
Does that answer your question? Okay, good. Um, I think we are on the slide with, yes, that one. Uh, so here we have consequences to the overuse of cellphones and other personal devices. Uh, there you've got first warning, um, first offense verbal warning, second, student conference, third, parent guardian contact, classroom referral, fourth, parent guardian contact office referral. Like, we're not sending, our, our teachers love our kids. They care about our students. And, and we don't anticipate that teachers will send kids to the office the first time any of these things happen. We want, like Dr. Gurley just said, a range um, of, of what they can do. And this really outlines steps. Okay, you got your warning here. You know, you've got that phone again. This is the next time. This, so teachers will have to keep data um, of, you know, how often they're having to ask a student to put their phone off and away um, and if they continue to do it. And, and of course, if the unauthorized cellphone usage during class continues, additional administrative responses could occur such as a student success meeting, like what is going, again, we're trying to figure out the why. What is going? I think we all love our cellphones. I know I do. But there's a time and a place for it. And so we have to figure out the why. Um, so that could be occurring during student success meetings, a referral to uh, VTSS, counselor support. And if it just continues, um, then we may need to look in, into tech overuse support groups for students. Uh, there are other changes to our SRNR to the point where it is now. But I wanted to highlight these areas specifically tonight uh, for your information. Uh, next slide, please. And we did have a thoughtful and committed committee working with me on our new document. And I just want to take a moment to recognize them and to thank them for their hard work. You see their names there. We had teachers coming in. It was, school was over. It was after June 16th. We had two teachers on our staff. We had one of three, three teachers, I think, on our staff there. Um, administrators, central office folks. So I am so grateful for the work that this team did to, to help to develop this new um, very important document that we have to support our students. Um, it is absolutely appreciated. Next slide, please. As far as next steps, uh, we're going to move forward with sharing this new SRNR document with students and families. We will continue with implement, implementation of the S-bar codes with regard to discipline and monitored disproportionality. Uh, we're going to support schools with consistency of implementation and consistency in the response to the behaviors. Don't want one um, school doing, responding to the same behavior that's displayed at another school in a different way. We want to be consistent. And so that concludes my, uh, if we can go to the next slide, I believe we have the sum and substance. Yes. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Um, at this time, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Ms. Dooley?
Uh, thank you for this work into the committee. Um, I would like to see um, coming back to us um, some review at certain points. Maybe it's at the semester marks of this data broken down by subgroups so that we can see uh, the progress towards uh, not disproportionately disciplining um, students that have been targeted in the past. Um, so if there's a way that we can work to create a report that we can see that, that would be great. Um, the cellphone piece uh, is critical. Um, you know, I hope we have reminders to teachers also about appropriate use of phones during uh, times when they are student-facing. Um, and then I'm also just curious about how we're bringing parents on board. I know that there are um, parents who feel strongly that their students should have phones and they should be in constant contact. And I think a lot of the, you know, dinging of texts and things are often parents communicating with their
You're right.
School day. Um, so just, you know, how are we approaching that conversation to um, you know, start the year off so that this can be successful? You know, I worry about the amount of time teachers are going to lose. You know, we could get through those four offenses with a cellphone in, you know, the first 10 minutes of a class period. Um, and so just, you know, how much time are teachers going to be spend, you know, spending on cellphones? And then as an extension, administrative time just on cellphones um, is a little bit of a concern. So just, yeah, that support piece um, is huge. And then again, just bringing parents on board.
Yeah, thank you um, for, for mentioning all of that. We don't anticipate that it'll be easy. Um, like I said, we, many people love their cellphones. Our students do as well. And you're right that oftentimes it's mom calling or texting the student in class. Not always, but every once in a while I do hear that that does occur. So we think that communication is going to be really key. If you notice Beth Chuck was on that um, committee. And so she's been working closely with me. I anticipate that we'll, we'll send lots of communications out. Um, that we're really going to be enforcing. Like I said, we've had guidance and expectations before. It's the enforcement that was not necessarily taking place and we really want to move towards enforcement. And we have to explain to parents the why. And, you know, um, I shared a couple of um, reasons that overuse of, of cellphones is bad. There's a whole list of them in our SRNR. And so we want our parents to read that and see what it is we're trying to accomplish. Yes, we want our children to focus. We want them to be attentive. We want them to learn. Uh, and there, there are things that are inhibiting that for some of our students. So it won't be easy, but we're ready to, we're ready to move forward and, and get our parents on board. And yes, you'd mentioned the teachers as well. We got to work with our teachers and I think that they'll be on board too.
Yes, I'm next. Um, well, I, I would like to um, echo the, uh, what Ms. Dooley said about coming back. I was thinking that um, it would be really helpful for us to hear like, you know, halfway through the year or whatever, um, how this is working, um, things that need to be tweaked, et cetera, that kind of thing. And, you know, I really appreciate the effort to be consistent all the way through the process of dealing with kids' behavior. Um, so thank you so much for that. And um, my one other thing would be just to, you know, as you're communicating to students and to parents, um, I know uh, you know, education um, is just so full of acronyms. And this is so full of acronyms that sometimes it's, you can get lost. I have found myself getting lost in the acronyms. And it would be really uh, important, I think, to not rely on those when you're trying to explain this to families.
The acronyms like BAP and BSC and BSO, those are not necessarily for parents. That is really for reporting.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're going to be very clear about what it is that the student did. And then um, in, I think in the SRNR, Student Rights and Responsibility, uh, they would have a list of certain behaviors and where it would, where it could possibly fall.
Yeah, but just, you know, putting it in language in sort of everyday street language.
Absolutely. I agree. I agree.
Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you so much.
For your thoroughness.
I appreciate it. Mr. Morse?
Could you come back to me, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Bryant?
Um, Dr. Oles, I want to first, uh, all thank you all for a great job in your committee. But I'm going to go back to my, in my, I'm going to kick into my teacher mode. And when I read this last night, this um, enhancement on cellphones, because it, it, it has brought to my attention community members and teachers that how much cellphone is a big distraction in the classroom, especially for a lot of our learners. And when I look at, when I looked at this, I said, law, this is a lot of steps. So um, Ms. Dooley, I've already given her verbal warning. And Dr. Craft, I've already, she's on her second offense. And so, you know, teachers are spending a lot of time juggling first, second, third offense. And I guess somewhere in this policy, and I know I've been reading a lot, being on VSBA board, a lot of schools are doing, not doing away with cellphones, but just sort of narrowing the use of the cellphones before school, on the bus, before school, during lunch, and maybe between classes if they have time. But they're a little bit more specific and some of them just doing away with them altogether. But it seems like with all these steps, it's putting a lot of onus on the teachers because it looks like if one student's on step one, step two, it seems to be, for me as a teacher, it would be a lot of steps in terms of the use of cellphones. So is there something in this policy that, that indicates that? And I know parents are concerned about being in touch with their children. But is there somewhere in this policy that we could say before, on the bus, before school, during lunch, after school to be more specific? As opposed to just, you know, having to go through all these steps?
We talked about more stringent um, procedures. This is
It's not, I don't consider stringent. I just think it's more specific.
Yeah.
And it's not overwhelming to teachers.
I think that um, what I, what I heard from committee members was that if we, you know, we, we know that there's some school divisions that are, have completely gone away for the day and things like that. Um, but I think that there was, there's a bit of a hesitance to sort of rip that band off, band it off like that and say they're absolutely not allowed. Some actually do use them for educational purposes uh, in class. And so this was a sort of a way to address them without, because if, what I understood was that if we say there's none at all during the day, that's going to be a bigger battle than having the, giving the warnings.
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying specific times of the day. On the bus, before class, at lunch. They still have use of their cell. On the bus, before class, at lunch. They still have use of their cell phone, specific times of the day.
And I, I, and I think if I can jump in there, um, not being on the, I wasn't on the committee, but I think from some of the initial recommendations. So, um, I know that I had, um, a lot of conversations, for example, um, with Dr. I when he was here, um, because there was a, a working committee, um, Ms. Horns, uh, shaking her head. There was a working committee that really put, um, a document together that I thought, um, you know, wow, if we take this on at this moment, I th, I think it kinda speaks to a lot of what you're saying in terms of, um, there's these colors and these, these times of the day. Um, but I think what happened, um, you know, when you assemble a, a, a thought group, um, and such a diverse thought group that, you know, this is where we arrive. And I think that the staff really felt that this was a good starting point, um, because we had some, there were a lot of conversations about transitional time and, um, you know, what happens during lunch. And I think we can, I think we can, um, begin to, I, I, when I was a teacher, you know, September through, September through, um, through, um, January, I was always Joe Clark. I was really just very firm. And as we start to learn one another, then I can start to relax things. And I think what we can do is just communicate to our students when you can, when you can use the phones. But I think initially, we have to build the relationships. Uh, and I think that this is the professional development piece and, and our teachers are good with this. So this is not gonna be too hard. We, we build the relationships and we start to remove a little bit of that power struggle. Um, so that students understand that you're gonna be provided the opportunity. But right now, until you get this math problem, it's, um, off and away. Um, and then we build up to the moments where, okay, when you're transitioning. I mean, and I think what we heard is that there's a lot of concerns, even when students transition in the hallway, that they're getting text messages from friends and that's what's inciting them to not wanna go to class and then go out and find this other student and, and, you know, do inappropriate behavior or, or, um, do defiant behavior. So it was, it's the task, this is a heavy lift. Um, and, and I think your points are absolutely correct. But I think this is reflective of the, these, this document is, is a reflection of the practitioners, meaning the teachers, um, and where they want to start. And I think we can, I've seen some of the other options and I think we can get there. Um, but I, I, this is definitely gonna be a, a heavy lift and we will need to communicate with families and it's gonna feel different. And, you know, and I know that this is not too big of an issue at elementary. I hope I'm not, um, naive in this thought. I see teachers back there nodding. This isn't too big of an issue at elementary. And I know if Dr., um, uh, Hastings was here, he would say it's not too big of an issue at Walker. Um, but then as they do, you know, as the freedom and changing the classes. And, and I know that we will work with Mr. Jordan and a B for team. We will work with our new principal, um, at, at the high school. And we will, we will make sure that we can meet our students. But i- it's going to be a mindset shift.
And Dr. Gurley, I will add that in, in the document, it does say that students can use their personal devices on the bus. Um, it does, it says that specifically, uh, under elementary and Walker. But under Buford and CHS, it says that they are turned off in designated instructional spaces. So, uh, we didn't use the words that they could have them in the cafeteria in the hallway. We really hope they don't, just because specifically what Dr. Gurley said, and we know that in unstructured times, that is often when behaviors spike and escalate. But we did, uh, give a little bit of leeway there that is during instructional spaces that they're off and away.
And also in doing so, I think, um, I know cause, cause community members come up and they ask about what's going on with the cellphones, especially at the high school level. And, um, I think community members also need to be in tune in terms of this as well. And also teachers are concerned about, um, about the cellphone use, not being able to instruct because of the distraction with the cellphones. That has been the, the concerns that have been released more to my attention.
Absolutely. And, and I hear you also that it can take time, uh, to have to continue to talk to David or Johnny or Suzie or Missy or whatever about the cellphone. And that, that was also brought up in our committee meeting. And and so like was, we know it's not gonna be easy. Um, and I think oftentimes because of the time and effort, that's why it's often not enforced. We do want it to be enforced so that we can have students really focused on their learning. And hopefully, students will get to the point where, okay, um, Ms. Jones is gonna let, uh, she doesn't mind if I use it when I'm in the hallway, is when I'm in this classroom that I've gotta stop using it. Uh, so we're gonna get to that point with building relationships with, and I think that that is a huge piece. Um, building relationships and setting those expectations with students and families. Ms. Bryce Morseberger? No? Ms. McKeever?
So, um, thank you again. This is interesting, um, step. I understand it's because of the state, the VOD, the standards there. My, um, I, every time you say the word enforcement, I get a little trick, you know, twin, I just, it's, it's a worrisome word to me because it's so disproportionate in our community against our, um, black and, black and brown children. And so every time you say that word, I just, I just see bias and I see disproportionality. So I hear you, um, and I just have to have it be said because, um, enforcement is not the goal. The goal is to not have the behavior. Um, and I, I sus, I feel very strongly that every child that comes into our division needs to have an IEP. And, um, this, any child who's getting regular enforcement needs to have an IEP. So I just don't know how you, you know, how, um, we ha, you know, we have many schools, we have four schools that our students are going to. And I, I can look at their records on a discipline, but I don't see where, what we have done to support them necessarily in these interventions. And in, you know, we've enforced a lot, but what are we doing to make it so that we are, are, are individualizing to them, um, their education? That's just, I just feel very, like, I understand that our teachers love our students and our, um, you know, are gonna go through this process and do, everybody's gonna check all the boxes. But what does that mean in the end? And I think Emily's, um, whole point about a report is great, but I actually think we should dig even deeper than that and, um, and, and really understand where our students are coming from and why they are encountering these problems at school. So reg, it's just not an enforcement problem. This is a community problem. Um, I know, for example, at lunch, uh, using your cellphone is, is literally a fortress, right? You can, you're sitting in your lunch, you don't have to engage with anybody. You are on your phone. And like those protective behaviors are, are just so vital for a high schooler who's trying to maintain a control of their lives. So I just worry so deeply that we're gonna find, again, a person. I'm not suggesting this is a culture. I'm just saying like, somebody will be like, oh, you shouldn't be on your phone and, oh, you should do that, you know? And be telling a student who is, you know, having a hard day, that they should not be on their phone. Obviously, in instruction time, we expect you to be learning and focusing. Any other time, I'm, why are you in that child's business? Um, I, uh, enforcement is a very tricky word for me and I'm just getting very anxious when we use that word because of the way it's disproportionately doled out. And I just feel like just because we can doesn't mean we should. And what are we doing better to, to make that child's educational experience better? So, um, and, and that go, leads me to the dress code, because like, we talked a lot about cellphones, but the dress code, obviously, I've been here long enough, as most of you have. I mean, we have fought this dress code battle, uh, at least three different times I've been on the board. And, you know, I, I really don't wanna see a student be sent home because her bra strap is showing. Or anything, you know, like, I, I just looked at the dress code and, um, I just curious what the ideas were when the board was looking at, or when your committee was looking at the dress code. And again, I just think it's too, um, I, I think there's a lot to be desired. And there's too much power given to a grown up in the situation where, for somebody to abuse their power rather than find a way forward with the student.
Ms. McKeever, if I may, um, the dress code piece was devised by staff members a few years ago. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make changes. We actually pulled it from the old document and plopped it right in here. Uh, so that it is, it represented what was decided by Charlottesville City Schools employees um, a few years ago.
I guess I just heard last year was a little bit tricky at some schools in terms of the hoodie and in terms of some, you know, allegedly provocative wear, especially early last year. So I just wanna make sure we're being consistent about the enforcement of that as, you know, at least the principals are well aware of what that dress code means.
And, and also, if I may, um, I hear you about the word enforce. Uh, I, it was never my intent to, to, um, have the connotation that it does, that it obviously had, uh, with you. When particularly the, the change in this document from code of con, student conduct to student rights and responsibilities was to remove the criminalization and the negativity and make it more of a positive and supportive document. There will be behaviors, we know that. And there will be adult responses that need to occur because of the behaviors. We know that. And there might be some more serious behaviors that require different levels of responses. I think that the difference in what the beginning of my presentation and the, the, the last part regarding cellphones, uh, is that the cellphone piece is where we've had it and we just did not really, um, require the students to put them away. So I, I hear you absolutely. We want to understand the why behind behaviors. We wanna support students and families and, and teach appropriate behavior so that students, all students can learn. The students that are displaying the behaviors and the students that are, are near the students, um, who may have their learning interrupted. So we, we do have work to do, absolutely. And, and I believe we, we had a, a wonderful dedicated committee that's, that put some great ideas into this. And now it's time to share it with the rest of the staff, uh, to teach our staff how to utilize, um, how to really change the way that we address behaviors and support students, um, and help our students to understand those expectations as well. But it really all starts with building relationships with students.
Yeah, I agree. I think, um, just so you know, my child yelled at me one time because I texted him in the middle of the day. So, um, I do, I, obviously, I was just thinking that his phone was on silent and put away and, um, he was like, I, I, I forgot to turn it off. Anyway, um, I just wanna say that, uh, it might be a really interesting and good educational community engagement to say to parents like, hey, you tell your children to have your, you know, because, I mean, I text them just not expecting a, an answer, um, but for him to know what's going on with the day. And I think it might be useful for um, parents to understand to not expect a response because they will be in, in class learning.
Thank you. Mr. Morse?
Um, I have a couple of points. Um, one was mentioned, I think, once or twice in terms of responses, responses. Um, specifically kinda the level one, level two. I know certainly our teachers are doing that, um, consistently. Um, and those are kinda a part of their practices to some degree already. I do worry a little bit about, um, putting, at least to me, it feels like a little bit more onus on the teachers in terms of those responses. Um, but, you know, as I'm hearing, it sounds like there's some buy-in from teachers, especially the ones that were on the committee, uh, to develop this. But that is, um, just for me, I feel like is a, a point that I should raise as well. Secondly, um, I, thinking about this document, thinking about the name of the document, student, students' rights. And I'm kinda curious, and I, I'll take responsibility for this as well, because this was mentioned in our last June meeting that this might come up. At what point did our students actually get a voice in this? And I feel like if we're gonna really take the approach that students have rights, students have, um, this, we are calling on their responsibility. At what point do we ask them for their feedback? Now, everything cannot be decided with students. I certainly understand that. But I feel like in such an important document that really focuses on how they behave in our schools, um, to be able to get some feedback from them. I know that at times that we have a student represent, representative on the school board. Um, I feel like this is the point where we really want to hear from them in developing some of this. Um, again, I am a person that really believes in student voice and making sure that they're heard, um, especially as they're getting older. And as a person that has tried to develop a cellphone policy with high school students, I know it can be difficult. Um, but I don't wanna focus just on the cellphone piece. I, I think just overall for some of this, I, I think it would have been important to have some of their response and feedback. And maybe we did have some of their feedback and I'm not aware of it. And so all, I can assure you that 100% of the, so the hot button, the big ticket things were all addressed with students. So, um, I won't say that they were, uh, they were done with elementary students. But, uh, Denise Johnson helped me to organize the superintendent's advisory for, um, our secondary students. And so each one of these things were talked about. I think the students, uh, and I will say the high school group, um, were consistent of some of our honor students. And we had students who said, I celebrate on the days that I get a D because I know I've done my best. And those students were reflected in that group as well. So I think we got a, um, a great cross-section of students, not just always the students who, um, are, are doing well, but they're just doing their best. Um, and so we got feedback about, you know, school lunches. We got feedback about, uh, with regards to the dress code and, and that I will tell you that that was, um, you hear me say big lift a, a lot because that was a big topic because, you know, I think my views are probably, um, a little 1960s sometimes when it comes to, um, dress. Um, but what we heard, um, what we heard was that we need our, um, our dress code to be, um, not targeting, um, particularly, and I heard our females that, I felt like some of the previous, um, language only targeted our female students when it came to dress. And we needed some more gender neutral language. Um, and so that's why you heard Dr., uh, you heard Dr. Odie say the work was already done here in Charlottesville. And so that came over. Um, I think students took a harder approach uh, with cellphones than we did, um, uh, on our advisory committee, particularly at the high school. Now, our Buford students, uh, they entertain me with the, with the cellphone conversation. But our high school students, um, they felt very, they felt stronger than, I mean, they said, you know, my teacher spends a lot of time correcting behavior or it's, it's very distracting. And so I do, from the teacher lens of it, and we had teachers on the panel, I mean, in the group, from the teacher's lens of it, it does feel like we're placing it, like, we're placing, um, the onus back on teachers. But I think what we are saying now is we're making it really clear what's a teacher managed behavior and what's a, um, school administrator managed behavior. And we're not saying that, um, sometimes we know that we need the assistance of the administrator, even though we've listed this as a teacher led. And if there's someone, because if there happened to be one, not that there's always one, but if we, if there happens to be one, a teacher who's an outlier, who's preferring to use the administrator versus the teacher, then we can support the teacher and say, hey, is there Hey, is there some help we need to provide to this classroom? But I do believe that we captured, now I wouldn't say we captured elementary's voice. Um, in terms of students, but, um, I do believe that. When we put this document together, we were able to say, but the students are not going to like this because we've heard what they said. And we're going to continue to do, um, the stu, superintendent's advisory group, um, this school year. So we're going to continue that.
Thank you for that explanation and additional information, um, just for me, just because this is kind of who I am. Like sometimes when we go through those policies, it's nice to hear that, you know, just a reminder that this, they go in, in front of students. Um, and I will dismiss the last thing I have to say.
Thank you. You're good. I'm good for now.
Um, our next item, we do have our, um, transgender policy, um, by Denise Johnson and Beth.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board and Dr. Gurley. Thanks so much for having us this, this evening. As always, I want to take a moment to thank you for your ongoing support and affirmation of our equity work. This evening, we want to present to you a quick overview of our policy which supports our, our students who identify as transgender and non-binary. This policy is another component of our division's commitment to equity and aligns with our strategic plan. As a division, we want to be intentional in our efforts to replace the factors that may lead to inequities. And instead adopt attitudes and behaviors that reflect acceptance, belonging, compassion. Integrity, understanding, fairness, cooperation and respect. Additionally, building and maintaining strong systems that ensure that our students have feel connected. Support, supported and safe is essential to achieving our equity goals.
As we present this, uh, stand, this draft standalone policy in support of our students who are gender expansive. I'll give a little history of how we got here. It's my understanding that Charlottesville City Schools was among the first in the state to broaden its nondiscrimination policy. And, and to include gender identity and expression. And so while we are always learning. And we are always striving to do better, we should realize that in some ways or in many ways, this commitment and this work is not new to our schools. In 2020, the state passed a law requiring the VDOE to develop guidance for schools in support of students who are tr- transgender and non-binary. After the adoption of this state model policy in 2021, you may recall that the VSBA recommended a comprehensive approach. To, um, it, uh, adopting or, or, uh, trans, uh, changing policy. So in the spirit of that, instead of developing a, um, standalone policy, at that time, we followed the VSBA's recommendation. And we did a review of our various policies and practices. And this strategy, I think the single biggest kind of takeaway that would be, um. Visible or recognizable to families was, uh, last fall when Denise and I spoke to you about how we were changing. How we can handle students' chosen names in Power School and things like that. So those are the sort of, um. I don't even know that there were a lot of changes even during that year. I think a lot of these practices were already in place. Again, always being tweaked, always being revised, but were already in place even then. But that was a key, uh, change that came from that review. However, at this point, we are recommending a draft, uh, this draft standalone policy for your consideration. The goal of this policy is not to create new protocols or new practices. That's the work that has happened over the last years. And, and probably even longer than years. The work of this policy right here is to bring all these ideas together into one policy. For the sake of clarity, uniformity and continuity.
So here are our next steps. We are requesting that you all review and approve the policy when you're ready. Once approved, we will begin division and school-based training on policy and regulations. Over the course of the school year, we will continue our training and workshops on supporting our LGBTQ plus students. With our first session scheduled for August 18th during our professional learning conference. Lastly, as we put systems into place that support our students, we also want to make sure that we're supporting our staff as well. Therefore, we will continue conversations that will ensure we're being intentional about being fully inclusive. As you review the policy and regulations, please let us know if you have additional thoughts or feedback. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Um, any questions from anybody? Ms. McKeever will start it, your own. So thank you so much for all of the work that you all have been doing on this. Um, my question is, uh, can we, well. To what extent do we need to wait? Because they said they're waiting for our approval before they start training. On this policy and regulations. And I just wonder with start of school, it might be useful to have the policy move forward. Um, but obviously I'll take the will of the board. I just wanted to know delaying.
So really, I mean, we had all of the pieces, correct? They were just spread out.
That's correct.
So if I may, just was curious like, um. Besides pulling all the pieces together in one, one, um, policy, I mean, what other type of input? Or have you had any other feedback or reached out to other groups to weigh in on that?
I think some of this feedback has come truly over the years as we've made these changes. But Denise and I did put a little list together, you know, there have been, um, student groups over the years that have been vocal about some of these issues. Uh, there have, uh, we've, we've leaned heavily into our school mental health professionals to speak to these, especially very specific practices. Um, we've checked with members of the LGBTQ community for a whole variety of reasons over the years. And leading up to this policy, including this year. Uh, we've spoken with principals, equity committee members. Uh, some, just some general community members who have expressed interest on this. So there has been some feedback. Both over the months that we've been sort of reviewing this, but also again, over kind of the years that we've been putting some of these practices into place.
Yeah. So and our school board attorney. So I mean, to what extent, um. Would this impact or hold up training? Because we, we have all of this, even, you know, if we were not to, to approve this tonight.
We're prepared to move forward with our LGBTQ plus, uh, training as is. So we have a training plan in place. But to have train specifically on the policy and the regulations, regulations associated with the policy is what the approval would, would move forward.
So, I mean, I read through both, but I mean, does that feel really differently? I mean, is that going to impact? The training? I mean, are people going to go, oh, my gosh, this is so different. This feels different.
No, but we do want the staff to be informed and our students informed, the community informed of the new policy and what, what's involved with it. And so it's a, it's an information, um, session that will be had about the, the overview of the policy and the regulations associated with that.
Okay. Any other questions from, so.
I just have no doubt that this is going to eventually pass unanimously. And so I feel like I would love to keep with our. The policy of, or practice of not moving something to an action item when it hasn't been advertised as such. But I would think that at the August 18th training session, you could assume that it is coming.
I mean, can anybody think of any other groups? I mean, I would like for us, and I think we would, continue to be open to getting feedback. From local groups or other groups. I know a couple of us were emailed. You know, and had, had eyes on this policy and eyes on Charlottesville. So I just, I. And not that this board wouldn't continue to do better if, if there were changes that we needed to, to. Offer to the policy. So I mean, I concur. Does anybody else have any questions as far as I, I think we should vote on it? But I, I personally feel like my, and I will of the board is to go ahead with the training. Is there any, are there any problems with that? Yeah. Yes, go ahead, Dr. Kraft.
Um, yeah, just, um, I think this is really terrific. Um, what I, I was wanting to ask about the piece where you're talking about, um. You know, use of facilities and, um, if another student is uncomfortable. With the transgender student, then that student can be, um, shown some kind of alternative. Alternative space. Or is that a new thing? Is that, was that added as a new thing or have we had that? In other policies? Okay. Yeah. It's just, you know, in our, the, the climate. Out there, um, not, not so much in our division, but out there, um, you know, about, you know. Well, you know what I mean? You know, parents' concerns and things like that. Um. I don't, I don't, you know, I mean, that's just going to be out there, but I think this is great. It's really important for us to have this. And I don't think anything should hold up the training that you're going to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kraft.
Mr. Bryant, sure.
I said a quick question. Um, the student success meeting to support. On trans, transgender and non-binary students, is this going to be strictly for school counselors or other staff members? Will they be trained in, in, in doing these meetings?
So we've talked, um, we've talked at length about this, um, because I think this was like the, who's responsible for this. And, and really, when we think about it from a team approach, it's whatever the resource that the student needs. Um, so typically the student has this great relationship with their, um, school counselor. Um, if we're talking about a secondary student, sometimes, you know, at the, we do experience this at the elementary school too, where the teachers lean into this. Um, but I think when we look at it more so from the developmental aspects of what, um, are some of our older students need. We really talked about who are the people and the resources that come to the table. Sometimes it's the social emotional worker. Sometimes it's the school counselor. Um, sometimes it may be the teacher leading the work. Um, I think it's who has the relationship with the student. And I think that that's kind of where we landed. We, we know that we want our, um, we want our school couns, school counselors to be trained in this. But sometimes the counselor may say, but they have a better relationship with Mr. Bryant, their science teacher. Um, so we need to pull him into this work. Um, and so we've not said that this is the sole responsibility of. But we know that someone may need to take the lead in order to ensure that the, um, student is successful.
And I, I think one of the roles of the counselor in this is just frankly, just the accountability piece. All right, the student said they want their name changed. So who's going to follow up with that? So I think obviously that, like Dr. Gurley said, we're sort of leaning into who is, who does a student have? A safe and trusted relationship with, but then there's the piece, who's going to make sure all this gets put into place? And so I think that's the place where you, where you just have to have a designated person so that it doesn't fall into the cracks.
Any other questions, comments? So not that I expected you to be prepared for this, but I was just curious. Like where are we in each of the school buildings as far as bathroom designation? You know, I know that some schools have, have changed signage on them to just be, you know, non.
I, I could be wrong, but I believe all the schools have gender neutral bathrooms or that just say student bathroom. And I think all the schools or almost all the schools have single stall bathrooms as well. So that, that definitely is, as you know about the Buford designs, that is the, the, the wave of the future is to have single stall restrooms. And so that's, um, but we're, we're just fortunate that some of our buildings had that baked into the design even from our, even in our old buildings. So, um, so that's, that's an area where I feel pretty confident.
Yeah, I would just love to hear if there aren't, if there are some that don't have that, if we could address that, please. All right. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to make sure for our follow-up. So you want to know if that, if students don't have access to. Cause I know Ms. Swift looked at me like, what am I supposed to write? Uh, so you want to know if they don't have access to a single stall? Or if there's one available, then we're good in every building.
Well, I would hope that we're moving towards just. Gender neutral bathrooms in all buildings. And I want to make sure that, I mean, there may be some that are designated. I don't know. But I just want to make sure there is, there are access in each of our school buildings.
Sounds great.
Or, you know, bring that back and we can have a further discussion about it, I guess.
And maybe to add to that, the situation in terms of locker rooms. Um, I'm not sure what that is for the school district right now, but maybe that's something we need to look into and figure out how that's being utilized.
That's related to like how the policy impacts locker rooms. Okay. And we, it has language in there about the, um, locker, so we can make sure we vet that.
Yes, I, I saw the language. I just want to make sure that we're updated to make sure we're good.
And I just, I will also just reinforce, you know, one of the things that just becomes more and more clear to me as we talk about, um. Bathrooms or locker rooms, students may want privacy for a whole host of reasons. And this is just one example, by, by training our attention on students with particular needs or particular concerns, we benefit all the students.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate you both.
Appreciate you.
All right. Um, we have another, um, policy update from Ms. Powell related to non-resident students. And then she will also follow that up with our security camera update policy.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gurley, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first policy that has, um, three updates is the admission of non-resident students policy, um, J E C C. The three updates are fairly straightforward. One, uh, needed to update the titles for who's, has overall, overall. Responsibility oversight for the program from assistant superintendent to chief operations officer. That was just a decision that was made when Dr. Odie came on board. She was C A O and there was a title change. Um, so that update is reflected here. Also, there was an update to reflect the, um, our actual practice of allowing payment plans for families. Before I ever came into this position, under special circumstances, payment plans were allowed up to December. And this was prior to the pandemic, but families have been allowed to do that, uh, if there were special circumstances. And now, um, since the pandemic, they actually, again, in special circumstances have been extended to full year at times. And in conjunction with that, we are preparing to, um, hopefully allow for a credit card payment option. We don't have the solution in place yet. We've explored some options and some other priorities have put it on the back burner. But while we were addressing tidying up this policy, we wanted language that allowed for that. So that, those are the changes for the, um, policy J E C C.
No, I was just going to see if there's anybody question, any questions specific to this. All right. Thank you.
All right. Do you have the next one as well?
So the next item is the, um, is a new policy. We don't have a policy explicitly for. Security cameras and video recordings, although a number of our policies would make reference to them, we didn't have an explicit policy. And so this policy, um, addresses why we have cameras, how video may be used. Where and how cameras, um, operate in our facilities, who is authorized to access video. Um, the record retention requirements for video recordings, which are in alignment with the Library of Virginia. And essentially the reason we're bringing this forward is we, we found that with the expansion and improvements of this element of our security system. Um, certain situations come up and so forth, where we just felt that policy was silent where, and we wanted to, to be more, um. Transparent and readily available as, as far as what the camera system is all about, what role it plays in our security system. And, and how we, we work with that system. So, uh, this policy is brought forward for your consideration.
Any questions, anybody? So, I mean, I did read through this as well, um, but I'm just making sure that this is hallway. Or they're not in classrooms.
No, no, not at all.
We're not going there.
Camera placement is primarily our, our goals. Um, we're still, the, the continued investment, we're still trying to realize all this. But we'd like facial recognition quality at every entry point into the building in case we need that. Um, there is hall coverage and we like to cover, if we're going to cover a hallway and we have to make choices, you always like to, um, in our current situation, know. When students, you know, be able to identify entrance and exit to the restroom, but you can of course never have cameras in restrooms or in classrooms. And then, um, when the other area is sometimes like in large common areas like gyms or cafeterias, just general high level cameras. That cover a broad area, exterior perimeter cameras. It's nice to have coverage on parking lots and frequently traveled areas. So there's certain criteria we consider about where cameras could be most needed and most useful. It's also important to understand, we don't have staffing to monitor cameras. Cameras are used, um, to identify what happened. After something has happened primarily, or, and this is considered best practice. If an incident is occurring, if there's a crisis with an active threat, you can, we can partner with law enforcement for them to gain access. To the camera system in the situation. And that can help people understand what's going on in the building. Um, and that's part of the infrastructure and plans we're working on with our, um, first responder partners. And that's part of the infrastructure and plans we're working on with our first responder partners.
Any other questions?
Just wondered, do we have enough cameras to satisfy our security needs?
So the high school, we've made great gains and improvements here as well as at the middle school. And of course, as we design the new middle school, we'll have a good lens to that. The elementary schools are lacking in cameras, only Clark initially had cameras, but with our latest round of security grant applications, we're looking to add cameras at our elementary schools. We've had a number of requests from principals, it's primarily property damage after hours, things that happen, exterior coverage is really what we're lacking at our elementary schools, and we're looking to make gains in that area. It's still good to have facial recognition on who's coming in and out of your buildings, but beyond that, you don't have the same level of hallway coverage and things like that at an elementary school, it's perimeter and entry points primarily. Those are the goals. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. And our last agenda item is Dr. Baptist, and she will be bringing the COVID update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. Well, we are going into the another school year and we're still dealing with COVID. You have a document that has come from the schools, I know principals were involved, and I don't know who else was involved with coming up with some of the questions. And then Central, pardon?
These are teacher questions.
Teacher questions, okay. And then administrators at Central Office have reviewed some of the questions, and we've also done some research for different things to come up with some answers. And as we get started with that, I would like to say our answers to some of these questions are current as of August the fourth, because things are still changing. I was to be involved in a meeting this afternoon with V D H updates, and it was canceled because they're expecting updates from CDC any moment. So there, I will have another meeting, so what, what the recommendations we have now are right now, so we will see what happens. Rather than going through each of these one by one, unless that's the way you prefer, I did want to just list a couple of things that we are continuing, that we have been doing up to this point, we will be continuing testing. We will have the company who's been doing the testing will still be coming three days a week for this next year, and we'll have that scheduled out soon. We still will be doing a dashboard. We will be encouraging vaccinations. If if Blue Ridge would like to do any vaccination clinics within the school system, we will certainly support that, but we will still encourage. We are going to continue with COVID leave. It was mentioned this evening by one of the speakers that it had five days in in our listing. That has been changed to seven days. And one reason for that is with the change that we're doing with only isolating for five days, you're likely to have a weekend in there, so it could be more like seven to nine days that somebody would be out. So the seven days is what we would have for COVID leave, which would not affect someone's sick leave. It would be converted to sick leave.
And Dr. Baptist, I think also just to, you know, because I know that question came up earlier with regards to, you know, we, we recognize that as we looked at the data from last school year, that households were impacted. And so it does list, Dr. Baptist does have listed here that we're gonna work with people. With most certainly, we don't want to cause any hardships, we don't want to cause any hardships with any of our employees. And I think the the key to what she just said was that, you know, this, while we're giving seven days, it really turns into nine days, because just organically, a weekend is gonna fall in there. So it's, it's nine days right now. But as we assess each situation, and so just working with your supervisor, so if you're a teacher, working with the principal, or if you work, if you're whomever else working with your supervisor, but this is just the start, and it is ever evolving based on the needs of our employees.
And and one reason for this too is that with our change in expectations for quarantining, which are lessened, and for isolating, which have been lessened from 10 days to five days, it's not as likely that people will need to be out as long for any instances. So as Dr. Gurley said, this is something that we will continue to work on. We will still be doing some contact tracing, the Health Department has given us some guidance that rather than doing contact tracing for every case, we will do it when we have three connected cases, which could be three in one day, or classroom, or one each day over three days that are connected. So we still will be doing some contact tracing. Filters, we will be updating our filters, at least some of the filters in the schools with an M O U that we have with the Virginia Department of Health. We are get, are being given about $150,000 in an M O U for some coordination help regarding COVID in in way of personnel and with filters. So we're very pleased, we're getting about $71,000 in filters. So we're excited that the division will not have to handle that expense. And then, of course, we are still continuing masking for staff at this point. And so those are the things that we are looking at. From last year, we do have some changes, which somewhat alluded to, looking at the changes in quarantine. The the advice from V D H did change in July, that if someone is exposed, whether they are vaccinated or not, they're not necessarily expected to quarantine if there are no symptoms. So we're following all of this guidance, we're looking at it, and we are in the process of getting updates on the division website, said that we'll have all of that, knowing that it's a changing process. But we know what's up there now is from 2122. And Ms. Chuck and I have talked several times about getting it updated, and we will get that done by the time school opens. So those are some of the the main things that are going to stay the same and a couple of the changes. And again, I will be glad to go through any one of these questions or in all of them, if you would prefer.
Anybody have questions down to my right? Ms. Dooley, Dr. Craft?
Just real quick, could you just update us on the the community transmission level?
I can, it gets updated every Thursday evening, so since we've been in this meeting, CDC is listing Charlottesville City back into high, we were in medium last week, we're back in high this week. And Albemarle County is listed as medium, so I always check around, and I didn't, I didn't check some of the other localities, but we did move back up to high this week.
Mr. Bryant?
I said a quick question, Dr. Baptist. The new booster shot that's coming out in September, will that be available for Charlottesville City employees?
It will certainly be available. I don't know whether Blue Ridge will want to do a vaccination clinic within the school system, or they'll just give us information about where people can go. If they're only giving us information about the clinics, we will certainly share it. If they would want to do a clinic within the schools, then we would support it.
Is there a reason why we're not gonna do the tracker anymore?
What, one of the recommendations changed because of contact trace, oh, wait, I might be answering the wrong question. Are you talking about the dashboard or contact tracing?
The by-school tracker that used to be up? Where you would say how many cases there were? I thought there was a question and they said it wasn't gonna be.
We're still doing the dashboard, we just have not had many cases reported, we've only had two cases reported since July 1st. Now, do I think there are more cases within the school system? Yes, but since many people are not working this summer, we have not had the cases reported. But as soon as everybody's back in, we've already got the mechanism in place for the cases to be reported, and we will be updating them daily.
Okay, I thought it said we no longer will do the daily.
I think, I think you, maybe you were talking about the schools, like the calls from individual schools, that changed, right? I mean, I think that's school-based.
We'll continue the weekly spreadsheet. We will, yeah, we'll continue the dashboard. I thought it said we're not gonna update it daily, sorry, that was it, I was.
We will be continuing that, and calls, we may change that classroom calls versus entire school depending on cases.
And you said that, Dr. Gurley, that if someone has exhausted their leave, they could still to the administration or H R for some.
Yes, ma'am, so again, we, we've been playing with the number. And so what we decided upon was the seven days, because that, the seven days is longer than the recommended quarantine. And then recognizing that that would essentially give people nine days, because there's a weekend, you know, there would be a weekend and there somewhere, so that's nine days employees have access to. And most certainly, if, you know, if COVID is going through your home and there's some leave issues, then we just are gonna encourage people to work with the super, that, I'm gonna encourage the supervisor to work with the employee as we always do.
Can I just make the suggestion, I thought what Ms. Esposito was talking about was very wise, that if we could offer, have some of the, like, I think seven days is plenty of time, honestly. I think I was telling somebody I have like literally five days of leave, sick leave the whole year, so I but I do find that the it would be helpful to talk with the teachers about that, I mean, to to have, I think that's a a great starting place. Is to sit down and ask them what would be best. And I think you might come up the exact same thing, but I always and and I know that, you know, everybody's been out of town this summer. And certainly, we don't want to ask more of our teachers over the summer than we already do. So I think it might be helpful, though, to have a, I would love to see a basically COVID committee like we had, just kind of continuing to discuss these issues behind the scenes to give us these recommendations, because I think we, there's a lot of division. And it would be helpful if we could kind of have like some unity saying, hey, this is what we decided based on X, Y, and Z, and I would just, and it would be very helpful as a, as a policymaker. So, thank you.
And and I think that, and we most certainly can, you know, I'm definitely not opposed to engaging teachers to see where they are in terms of, you know, like the number of days. I think what we all decided as, what we all concluded as a committee is that this go around is gonna be much harder than previous years in terms of like tracking COVID. And, you know, we used to encourage people to go to the doctor when they weren't feeling sick, when they were feeling sick, I'm sorry. And now we're doing a lot of rapids, and, and so I think this go around is a little harder. And so we most certainly will always work from a great place and and you know, work on the honor system and don't want to penalize the masses because of a few, but I think from the it, this, this one is, this go around is hard in terms of creating regulations when we have very little guidance. And so, yeah, we can most certainly pull together a committee. And one of the things that I put down is my little chat with Jessica Taylor to just get some input from C, I think that's been like my easiest go-to now, just call Ms. Taylor and see what she can help me with, just getting the pulse, but it, this go around is a little difficult for us out of transparency.
And the Health Department is still doing the calls with the local school divisions. Right now, we're doing it every two weeks, but I, we probably will go back to every week once schools are back in.
And I do want to give us a little plug, because we are, I think, one of the only school divisions doing COVID leave at this moment. So that makes me feel really good to know that, you know, we are at a starting point of offering something where others are not.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you as always. And yeah, we understand that things are changing rapidly, probably right now while we're in this meeting. You know, and and I think what I would hope and and I would ask is that and it feels like, you know, again, we we've had a couple of conversations tonight where the decisions and the onus and the impact of some of the decisions that we as a board are making, and and Dr. Gurley and his team are making, you know, are only impacting teachers, and and I don't want you all to feel like that. And I'm asking that we all remember that decisions, you know, whether you're talking about masks or whether it's quarantine and and the lack thereof now, that affects a lot of people, and it affects big systems, and it affects teachers in the classroom, and whether, if you're out and and we don't have enough substitutes to start. So I mean, I want, and I hope that everybody will pause and just, you know, is this the best decision? And and it's not just about me, you know, and I might be you know, putting out half of my fellow employees if I show up, or or whatever the case, and then also with families. You know, you've, you've been operating with the the executive order that was put out last spring with the opportunity to make a choice, you know, for your students to to show up and wear masks or not. And we want to continue to support those kids who who need or want to wear masks. Again, we're not, we're not speaking about it, but I want them to feel supported, but I also want families to pause, and and I realize that there are burdens on families sometimes as far as not having enough days to stay home if your kids are sick, or maybe the families are sick. And kids are most likely exposed, but they're asymptomatic, but we're gonna send them to school, and there's trickle trickle out effects for those types of things. So I just am asking that everybody really think this through, and and we are in this together, and we are doing our best as a board and a division to take care of everybody, and we want people in the, in the buildings. We want students learning in the buildings, we want teachers here establishing and making those relationships with the kids. So it it's really, really important. So I hope that everybody will continue to do a good job and and think about others as well. But thank you, Dr. Baptist, as always. Gotta find my agenda. Thank you. All right, the next item was our board response to written reports. And then we are moving on, if anybody had any questions about that. And then we are moving on to our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. So if anybody would like to come up out of the media center. I see nobody jumping up. And if we have anybody online who is raising their hand or expressing a desire to speak. We see nobody, I'm seeing a nobody, okay. So thank you for that. And next, we have comments from the board. So I will start down here with Ms. Dooley, if you have any comments. Dr. Craft?
Yeah, well, I would first like to acknowledge that we are starting another school year. And this is Dr. Gurley's first start of the year. We're almost with us for a whole year, but anyway, there's a lot of exciting things. I know we're all, you know, we get bogged down by some of the COVID and some of the negative things. But I think there's much to be celebrated in all the work that's gone into starting the year and all the people who have put in the work that will help us start off and launch a new year that I think will be a great, a great year under Dr. Gurley's leadership. So just to mention that, and I just wanted to say that, you know, regarding collective bargaining and you know, the process that we've been in, yeah, you don't want to walk out yet. I just want to say that I feel very encouraged by the process and by the the hard work that everybody has done. This is, it's so new, and you know, it can be very fraught in a lot of ways. And I think that we, my my feeling is that we're sort of working through that. And I really look forward to adopting a resolution in soon, in the near future, and really embarking on this process. So, you know, I, I think it's gonna happen, and I I feel encouraged right now, I feel good about it. So thanks to everybody who's making that happen. So thanks to everybody who's making that happen. And I, and I guess just along those lines, just to reiterate the importance of having for us as board members to hear from teachers, to hear from staff. It's really, I mean, I'll speak for myself, but when we are tasked with making certain decisions, you know, for me, it's very hard to know how to do that without knowing what the people who are, you know, teaching and working in, in the division, what people really want and what you think is important. So I hope we can, we can continue to have a strong voice that, and, and it, that you will reach out to us as board members, you know, to let us know what you think. And then one more, one more thought I had, and this was to do with the media. And the importance, you know, I think the media, our local media have been very important in communicating the work that we're trying to do here with the community, with the larger community. And now I think it's especially important to be able to, you know, I, to appreciate that, appreciate all the work that the local media has done. And also going back to all of our issues about transportation and kids getting to school, I think the media can play a really important role in bringing the message to the community. And as Ms. McKeever was talking about before, making sure that the whole community is engaged in protecting our kids and understanding, you know, the difficulties of what we're trying to do and getting everybody to school safely. So I know we've lost Catherine Knott, and we didn't get a chance to say goodbye to her, but I know she did a lot of that work, and I know there are others out there. And so I appreciate you and, and really ask that you continue to, you know, bring the important issues out to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
A spark. A small spark can ignite a fire, and the same goes for a spark of passion. Spark of passion can ignite learning. And that learning is what propels us and lights the future for our students. For any students that might be watching, I doubt it during the summer, or any parents that come across this meeting and wondering what to say to your students, I ask you to tell your student, your child, to take the path of exploration, take the path of creation, and take the path of imagination, because you never know what spark might come out of that. And not to be too metaphorical, but as educators, we have to provide the right environment. I won't get into all the Kindle and everything to, to make a fire go, but it is certainly our responsibility. And I know we take it seriously as educators to provide the right environment for our students to foster that fire, that passion, so they can learn throughout this school year. So good luck, and we'll be supporting you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Morse, you're a hard act to follow. Well, really, right? I like that. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And certainly, I want to encourage all of my fellow, notice that fellow colleagues, who wants a teacher, always a teacher, a great start of the school year. I can remember how it was in August, you know, the excitement of getting ready, getting prepared for the new school year. Can't wait to see your kids decorating the bulletin boards and all those things that go into preparing for, for the children. Our staff members, bus drivers, just everybody, the whole village in terms of educating our children. I wish you well. Have a great school year. And by the time we come back together as a board, you've already been in the mix for a couple of weeks. So it would have gotten your feet wet. So I wish you all a great school year.
No, Ms. McKeever? Nope, you're good. All right, thank you, everybody, for all the comments, those who showed up for public comment. Thank you, as always, for your messages. We appreciate all of you. I did, again, I, and I'm not going to read the specifics, but I do want to remind people, I appreciate emails that we receive from parents and teachers. And then I think I just want to remind people that we do occasionally get emails from parents who, who do have concerns, you know, about the mitigation that, that we're putting in place and keeping their kids safe. So I don't know that, that those get talked about as much as some of the other things, you know, as, and questions about, some good questions, you know, but families who would be interested in cohorting their children with, with other kids who prefer to mask. So I just don't want us to lose sight that there, that there are parents out there who have those concerns. And, and I'm not to say that they don't all, but that they are voicing those, and they have some good ideas. So again, just adding that and remembering that when we're making decisions, because there are families who out there, who are out there, who, who do have those concerns and have brought some of those to us. So we appreciate everybody. We appreciate Dr. Gurley and all the work that your team has continued to do throughout the summer. We are here to support you, and we look forward to a great academic year. So thank you. Dr. Gurley, moving on to you, sir.
All right, I just want to remind everyone that we are back in the full swing of things. So our open houses and back to school events will be taking place very soon. And the information is, is here on your cow, on screen. And in addition to that, on Monday, May the 22nd, we are going to have an event, I think someone mentioned it earlier. I'm sorry. It's because I said May earlier. On Monday, August the 22nd, we are going to have the, we're going to do another event over at Friendship Court, where we are going to do just the little walking exercise where we just connect with our families. And, and again, I think we, we talked about the importance of just keep doing this and doing this until we get it right. So we do have those events coming up. And just to remind, you know, we will continue to do our testing, our testing events in the school. And, and you see this outline, you see this outline here. And our back to school, our back to school bash, which is on August the 20th. That's a Saturday, we will be having that. And I, I just want to make sure I say that we have, a lot of work has taken place this summer. You know, people always say, are you enjoying your summer? How's your summer off? And I can't, there's a lot of teachers that I can say have not had a summer off, because they're doing the work. The, our administrators are doing the work. And I just want to make sure that everyone's putting their oxygen mask on first and taking care of yourselves, and so that we can be well for our students when they return. We had a safety summit this, this summer, and that was Kim Powell and Jason Lee led that. And I just want to reassure families that as we open our doors, that their children will be safe here. We've done safety audits, we've prepared our staff members with protocols and response mechanisms to keep our students safe. And so I'm just very appreciative of all the work that's taken place. And that is it. And I just want to thank everyone, and I'm excited about having my first official start to the school year.
We'll have. Yeah, thank you. And we have our first work session wrap up, and we are testing you. Yes, oh, did I not say that? I'm so excited that you're here. It was just very touching to see her kind of looking at Dr. Gurley. Did I get that right?
So to come back and discuss the student rights and responsibility enhancements and how it's working overall, and maybe share some data. And then to make sure all our schools have gender, gender-neutral bathrooms, as well as where we are with the locker rooms.
Anything else? I think. Oh, yeah, just consideration of a COVID committee. Very convenient, kind of, thank you. Thank you so much. Upcoming meetings. I dropped the ball on that one. We have our, our next board meeting in September. And I don't have the date. September 1st, all right, so that's an easy one. I want to, again, wish everybody a great, great start to the year, and thank you so much. And I will adjourn the meeting.